All right, welcome everybody to the regular city council meeting for Galt Tuesday, May the 20th. Do we have a report from the closed session, Mr. Slendario?
Thank you, Mayor. There's no reportable action.
All right, thank you. I'll now call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pratton.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. If everyone would please join us in a silent prayer. And do we have Mr. Looking for a veteran? One of you veterans? Mr. O'Neal, would you like to lead us in the flag salute after the silent? You can come up to the podium here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you, sir. All right, Rose, can you please read our replay statement?
The meeting of the Galt City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, May 23rd at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, May 24th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recordings of this meetings can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrocable14.
All right, thank you, Rose. All right, we'll move on to item F, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. We have anything from council? No? All right, we'll move on to item G, Presentations. Our first presentation tonight is going to be from the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. It's the annual blueprint project update. I actually have something sent to us by the Secog staff that they've asked us to read. And it is that I'd like to introduce Casey, I'm going to butcher the name.
Lazon.
Lazon, okay, sorry. Deputy Executive Director of Secog. She's here to talk about the region's long-term transportation and land use plan, the 2025 blueprint. As local leaders, it's important to understand how our planning decisions at the local level impact not just our own city or county, but the entire region. The way we design transportation infrastructure, the development influences broader regional patterns from economic growth to environmental sustainability. If we think regionally, we can create more vibrant and connected communities that improve the quality of life for everyone in Galt and in the region. This is especially important because we are facing tough realities around transportation funding and we can't build everything we'd like to. It's crucial that we are strategic and prioritize investments that address both our local needs and the region's collective goals. Secog plays a key role in advocating for the communities in this region at the state and federal levels by working together to identify our shared priorities. Secog helps the region be more competitive for funding to support our projects. While you'll hear more about the blueprint today, our city has been working on this through our local planning efforts for a long time.
Thank you very much, Mayor Farmer.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that introduction and I'm very pleased to be here. I was here about two years ago when we were kicking off the public input process for the development of the blueprint plan. You are represented, the City of Galt, by Councilmember Bonnie Rodriguez on the Secog Board. Secog, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, is comprised of the 22 cities and six counties in the Sacramento region. That's on the map, that's on the screen. It's the only place where every city and county in the region comes together twice a month to do transportation planning and funding and try to tackle challenges that are bigger than any one community can solve. The particular thing that I'm here to talk about tonight is the blueprint plan. That is the long-range transportation plan. May I just say, next slide?
If the slide has a...
Turn it on, that works.
That's okay.
Thank you. Our long-range transportation plan, which we've called the Blueprint.
Chief, will you help her?
We can help.
Thank you. Yes, please.
It buzzed. It was, it seemed like it was working.
Let's see.
All right, I'm glad to know.
Let me go back here, just a second.
This isn't the only clicker. That's, that's great. Oh, okay.
Okay, let's, let me just get you on full screen and you should be able to take control from there. Go ahead. There you go.
Ah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so the blueprint plan is the, the region's long-range transportation and land use plan. It has to look out 20 years into the future, sorry, 30 years into the future. We're talking about the year 2050. And the Secog Board originally, when we kicked off the plan, decided that they wanted to create a plan that would meet a triple bottom line of goals. So that's on the screen, it says equity in economy and environment. And what that boils down to is when we are creating this plan that has to meet all of these different federal and state requirements, can we do it in a way that supports a strong economy for the region, a clean environment for everyone in the region? To do this plan, we knew it was going to take a lot of effort to meet some pretty strict targets for, state targets and federal targets for air quality and for, for greenhouse gas emissions under state law. There's climate goals that we are supposed to meet with this plan. So we did a lot of outreach over the last couple of years, and I'm here to talk about some of the themes that we heard out of that. The outreach that we conducted, so first, we did this tour of all of the cities and counties, boards and councils. This is my second tour of that. We also had partnered with Valley Vision to do a phone poll, a scientific phone poll, so that we could get a good cross-section across the entire six counties to ask them about what's important to them, what concerns them about issues of growth in their communities. We had focus groups that were representative across all of the six counties. We also had a survey that we put out there through pop-up workshops, which were held in every single community at just regular community events. We partnered with different community-based organizations to try to reach out to folks who might not normally hear about this effort, to get their input on those surveys. And we also held a regional workshop where we invited all of the councils and board elected officials from every city and county, all of their staffs, and some of the regional organizations that, that work with Secog on a regular basis to get all of their input. And we can distill all of that into the themes that you see on the screen here. Ensuring access and opportunity for all residents is, was a really common theme. And I think when we look in the information that we received, this is a very diverse region, as you very well know. Every community is different and people want options. They want options to be able to do the things they need to do, to be able to pursue the things and live the lives that they need and want for themselves and their families. Another of the big themes was providing housing options for all incomes and life stages. Housing and just housing that, you know, people can afford at any time of life was a really big theme that came out. Another one of the big themes I want to highlight here is safety in transportation. People wanted to feel safe when they are traveling, whether it is by car, by transit, by biking or walking. They feel that presently, there's just too much danger of collisions and injuries and deaths. And unfortunately, the statistics also bear out in that way. A couple of slides here just give you a little bit of the actual data that came out of our outreach. So this is a quote from one of the focus groups, that we need more efficient and accessible modes of transportation. Probably no-brainer, right? We all need and want that. So it was actually very good to just have that resonate through the focus groups. Another thing that we have here, this is a compilation of all of the input from the survey that went out across the region. And what you can see here is that the biggest issue there was just having housing that people can afford. And a lot of times, there was a lot of interest in like housing that, you know, students who are finishing college or moving out of their parents' house that they could be able to afford, but all the way up through people who are retiring and wanting to be able to live, you know, afford to be able to live on their fixed income. In addition to all of that outreach, we also, Secog does a lot of research and analysis and does a lot of coordination with all of the staff, so your city staff. We work with, along with the staffs of all of the cities and counties in the region, to understand growth projections, to understand your local plans, and how can those be coordinated in an efficient way across all 22 cities and six counties to develop this regional plan? And I want to share just a few things that we've learned. This is a graph of average annual population growth for the entire six-county region. The Secog's region's population growth trend is showing in green, that line up top, and then California's and the United States are showing in the blue and the pink lines. And what this is showing, that over the about 25-year timeframe that we're looking at, growth is generally slowing. We're still growing. We're still growing faster, in fact, than the state and the, and the nation, but it's just a little bit slower than it has been in, in past growth trends. That still means that, as I said, we're growing. So ultimately, we're still looking at this region adding 600,000 new people, 260,000 new jobs, and we would need about 280,000 homes to house those new people. That's what's showing on the left side of this chart. On the right side is showing Galt's share of that. And so that is built in coordination, again, with your city staff, understanding what are your general plans, what are the plans in the pipeline, to be able to forecast what that is likely to look like. So how does that look across the ground in the region? This is a really, I know, curious map for a lot of people to see. What this shows in the six-county region is the dark blue areas are kind of all of the existing built areas in the region. And then the light blue areas are where the blueprint is saying, we're going to see some additional growth, kind of outside of existing cities. Some people call those greenfield areas. And so in the blueprint, to accommodate those 600,000 new people, the 260,000 jobs, we are looking at about two-thirds of that happening within, building out within the dark, dark blue or the existing community areas. And then there is some strategic expansion that is expected to be needed in those light blue areas. So what does that look like on the ground and what does it mean to build, to implement the blueprint? Well, as I said, we've worked very closely with your local staff, and I believe Amy Mendez, yes, is going to share some examples of what implementation looks like in Galt. We thought it was really important to highlight that because implementation of this regional plan is going to look unique in every single city and county. So Amy, I'll give that to you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We had put together a jurisdictional highlight for the City of Galt, and so one of the things in working with Secog is kind of highlighting some of those areas that are important for us in terms of access and transportation and affordable housing as well. Obviously, one of the areas that we've been focusing on lately has been the C Street corridor and the connectivity into the Old Town area. That actually recently just completed the C Street project, which was funded partially by Secog. And so that's been an important project for us to create a transportation network into the Old Town area. And so obviously, that project has, just to come to conclusion, I saw today that there's some new trees out there that were just planted as I was driving in. And so shown on this map is the project area for that C Street project. We also have been working with Secog on other development areas, including the Galt Ranch area, which is obviously very important from a commercial development standpoint. And so creating connectivity from east to west, and how do we get residents on the west side of the freeway to the east side, also keeping residents off of the 99 when they are commuting within the community, if they need to go to the Galt Village area from the west side, wanting to make sure that they're not utilizing 99, but there's good connectivity there. And so also shown here is, you know, some of the roundabouts and the focus on just getting people around in the area. And so the Summerhorn Ranch, Galt Ranch community development is going to be key to that, as well as connectivity from east to west in the community, so.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
So that is a highlight of what, what blueprint implementation looks like in your community. There are a few other themes that we came up with those, though we were, as we were developing the, the transportation plan. And that is, one of the things we have to do is develop the budget. And it's looking at not just making up money, but thinking, okay, what are all of the different sources, local, state, and federal, of transportation funding over the planning period, over the next 30 years? So when we forecast that, it's about $40 billion, which, which is a lot of money, and it seems like a lot of money. The interesting thing, when we develop this plan and we're asking for every city and county to give us what all of their transportation projects and priorities are, the dollar amounts added up is more than $40 billion. And so one of the themes is, wow, we are going to have to be very strategic about how we bring transportation online to serve everyone's mobility needs. And we're going to, and we also need to face the reality that even though we can project $40 billion, there's no guarantee that that money is going to come. Things can change at state and federal level, and even with the economy, that can affect funding. And so some of the themes that have come out in working with all of the communities in the region is that we really need to prioritize maintenance and repair, and we need to prioritize lower cost and quicker projects so that we can try to address needs sooner rather than later. And I want to give you a couple examples of this, or maybe just one example of it. So we have, in our funding program, we had awarded some money to the City of Marysville. They have a state highway that runs through their city, and they wanted the funding to be able to see if they adjusted the travel pattern in one of the neighborhoods, if they could reduce the cut-through traffic that was happening. And so what they did, they did a, what we call a quick-build project. So they got some hay bales and they made these little roundabouts that diverted the traffic, and they tested it out. And what happened was initially, you know, the residents were, what is happening here? But it actually diverted all of the cut-through traffic, and people started to walk and, and bike around in their neighborhood. And so being able to test that, one, they started to solve that kind of safety issue that they were seeing in the neighborhood, and then they were able to, you know, prove that, hey, okay, then we can go after some more funding to maybe make this permanent. Okay, so what's happened right now is that we've worked on this with, again, your staff, with all of the other cities and counties in the region to develop a draft plan. The Secog Board is going to be asked to release that for a public review period at the end of this month. That's the blue check mark up there for May. It'll be out for two months, along with an environmental impact report. We are looking for public comment on that. And then we will be taking the rest of the summer and the early fall to incorporate all of that public comment into a final plan. And November, it's, we're scheduled for the Secog Board to adopt that and certify the EIR, and then we will be rolling straight into full-on implementation of, of the plan. I can stop there now and answer any questions or show you a few more examples of implementation.
Just, so just to clarify for layman's terms, so you'll take all the, the input that's given regionally, so not just from Galt, and then the plan that's adopted in November will include any projects that we bring forward, our representative brings forward, along with all the region, right?
That is a very good clarification. As far as like transportation projects, we, we will take the comment, but we are likely not going to incorporate, you know, big transportation projects into the plan. To do that would require a level of analysis that might put us out of the timeframe for compliance with state and federal timelines.
Right, but if there's smaller stuff, is what I'm saying.
Potentially, yes, yeah. Particularly if it is not something that needs to go through a full air quality analysis. And that definitely is something, you know, we're happy to talk offline with your staff, for sure, about that.
Okay, go ahead, proceed.
Okay. We are, we are definitely looking for that. We are also looking for any comments on the policies of the plan, because the policies drive all of Secog's implementation work and how we support cities and counties, so. So please do weigh in on that. Okay, a couple of examples of implementation that we have. Actually, there's, technically, there's four on this slide here. So on the bottom corner, we have our mega-region, mega-region working group, excuse me, which is appointees from the Secog Board, from the San Joaquin Board, which is an equivalent of our agency, and then the Bay Area. They sit on this mega-region group and they try to coordinate what are some priorities across the mega-region, so big transportation project priorities, which they have created what we call the mega-region dozen. So these are projects that are of significance to the Northern California mega-region, and we've been able to successfully organize to advocate for grant funding for those projects to be delivered. I think something that would be of particular interest is the Valley Rail Project that extends up through the San Joaquin Valley, all the way up into the northern part of the Sacramento Valley. Another program we have is Green Means Go, which is the top-left corner, and that is a program for, the green areas are areas that cities and counties have identified for additional infill development, so additional housing and, and non-residential development there to support revitalization within their communities. So we have received grant funding from the state that we were able to award out to cities and counties. I believe Grant may have, Galt may have received some of that funding, and so we are trying to support communities to implement their plans for infill. The top-right corner is Ready Set Trails, which is a regional vision that we created with all the cities and counties, looking at all of the different active transportation, bicycle, pedestrian plans, and trying to make sure to find where are the gaps between them and how can we, it's a vision for how can we connect all the cities and counties in the region with a, a network of trails, over 1,000 miles of that. That was adopted a number of years ago, and we are in implementation of that right now. And then the last one down on the right-hand corner is one of our grant programs to fund community planning. So it's really cities and counties working hand-in-hand with communities to identify transportation needs and then creating problem, sorry, solutions to those problems. The other thing that is coming up is our regional funding round. Actually, the first phase of that is already underway for our state funding. And then we'll have a regional round, which is a bigger set of money that is going to be available for all of our cities and counties to be applying to as well. Cities and counties will be part of shaping the framework for that, for how that funding is going to get distributed, and we're looking forward to working with, with your staff on that and with the Secog Board. And then last thing, the remarks that you received were that we need to work together as a region to be able to advance the vision of this plan. So it's time for teamwork, as our board chair and our executive directors will say that there's no time like now. We really need to work together to be able to represent all of the communities of the Sacramento region, to be able to build out the visions within those communities and for the whole region. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you very much. It's kind of nice to hear what this is all about with so many people in the audience. It's not normal, so for people that kind of know what goes on behind the scenes. So Ms. Rodriguez, since you're our appointee to Secog, is there any comments you'd like to make?
You know, as one of the newest members on Secog, I've been learning a lot, and one of the things that I've learned is that the, well, first of all, Secog's team is phenomenal anyway. And so those of us who get to help along with that, you know, it's been an honor to do so. But I have been, I've just been very impressed at, it's hard, you saw the map of what they're covering, and it's amazing that they actually do take care about everybody. It's not just about Sacramento up there, which, to be honest, was part of my fear walking in. And so, you know, Galt is small, sometimes we really want the help, sometimes we want everybody to stay out of our backyard, but Secog really has been a, a good support, so. And I appreciate, just in the few months that I've been involved, it has been, it has been great, so.
Well, we appreciate you being a part of that. I think you're, when we pushed you to be our representative, I think you're the best fit for that, for that role on this council, for sure. So thank you for the presentation. Do we need to ask for public comment regarding the presentation, Frank?
Technically, since you've asked me, yes. If there is anyone that's interested, I don't think there's any cards, though, submitted for this.
There is not.
Okay, no public comment. All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate the information.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item G2. Our next presentation is going to be a certificate of recognition for Ms., for Ms. Nancy Healy from Parks and Recreation, and I think one of her constituents, Monica, wanted to say a few words about her, so if you guys want to come up.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Ms. Nancy Healy has been with us for almost 32 years, and she is retiring as of tomorrow. Her last performance is tomorrow. We wanted to recognize Nancy for being an outstanding gymnastics instructor. She has been an asset to the City of Galt. She is loved by her students, the parents, and all of the city staff who have had the pleasure of working with her. She has had several of her own personal gymnastics accomplishments that she wanted to share with us. She was taught by Olympic gymnast and coach Muriel Grossfield from the ages of 12 to 15. At the age of 18, she competed all-around for Keene State College in New York, in New Hampshire. At 19, she competed all-around for Scottsdale Community College, placing sixth in the state competition for balance beam and all-around, and was a member of the all-conference team and won Most Improved Gymnast for Team Awards. She has been instructing since 1976, which she started in Connecticut. She has taught there, Arizona, Nevada, and California. And when she moved to California, she sought out the small city of Galt, where she felt she could make a difference and add to the community. She started teaching for us in November of 1993, so we wanted to thank you very much for everything that you've done for us. We will miss you, but enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
Nancy, would you like, would you like to say something?
When I moved here, first of all, thank you for the recognition. When I moved here, I sought, I moved, I didn't move to Galt. I had moved, we'd just gotten married, and we moved to Stockton. And I sought out the city of Galt because it was small, and I felt like I could make a difference, which Monica had just talked about. And I do feel like I made a difference, I hope, but I also, in return, I got so much out of being a part of the community of, of Galt. The families and the children I've worked with over the years, I can't even express in words how much I have received from them, all the kindness and happiness. And I've even taught some of my students, I'm teaching their kids. So it's been, it's been really awesome. Parks and Rec has always supported me. Whenever I needed anything, they were there. And so I'm, I'm going to miss being a part of the community, and, but I'm also so grateful for the years I got to spend here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have, we have something for you. I'm going to bring it down here. All right, so Nancy, the City of, the City Council of Galt would like to give this certificate of recognition for your 32 years of teaching gymnastics. All right, we're going to move on to item G3, which is Military Appreciation Month Proclamation. So I'd like to read the proclamation first. Is there anything we're going to do special? Okay. What I'd like to do is, I mean, we don't have to, there's a lot of people in the crowd, but if any of you, after I read this, if any of you are a veteran would like to come up, you don't have to come up. We can do a quick little photograph with this. Okay, all right. So, "A proclamation by the City of Galt, California, Military Appreciation Month, May of 2025. Whereas for generations, the freedom and security enjoyed by the citizens of the United States are direct results of the continued vigilance and service of the United States Armed Forces over the history of our great nation. And whereas the sacrifices of those who've served, those currently serving, and the family members that support them, have preserved the liberties that have enriched our great nation, making it unique to the world community. And whereas in 2004, the United States Congress passed a resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, encouraging all citizens to honor current and former members of the US Armed Services and their families, including those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas the month of May was selected for this display of patriotism, because during this month, we celebrate victory..." this month, we celebrate Victory in Europe Day, Military Spouse Day, Loyalty Day, Armed Forces Day, National Day of Prayer, and of course, Memorial Day. And whereas during Military Appreciation Month, we are reminded of the important role of the United States Armed Forces have played in the history and the development of our country and state, and our responsibility as Americans to support and honor the selfless service of our military families. Now therefore, the City of GALT hereby designates the month of May as Military Appreciation Month, recognizing our GALT service members and veterans, and remembering with deep gratitude the men and women who have given their lives in defense of our freedoms. In witness whereof, we have set our hand and caused the seal of the City of GALT to be affixed to this document on this 20th of May, 2025." So, do we have anybody that wants to come forward? We can get a photograph? If someone can take a picture, maybe, too, would be helpful. Ms. O'Neil? Thank you.
He's going to come down there.
Yeah, thank you.
I just did a signature. I just signed the paper. You guys did the hard work.
All right, everybody look here at the cameras. One, two, three. All right, good. Thank you for your service.
Sure.
We honor the National Military Appreciation Month with the highest respect and heartfelt gratitude. We appreciate the courage and resilience of those who serve, veterans, and their families. Thank you.
Any other, any other council member want to say anything before I move on? No? Okay. Just want to remind everybody, this weekend is Memorial Day, of course, as I mentioned. And so I was going to just say this to the end, but since there's so many people here now, but I think it's important that we all remember that Memorial Day is for those that have given the ultimate sacrifice. And so, you know, we're all, you know, going to be doing our fun festivities and barbecues and whatever we're doing, but I think it's important to remember that we wouldn't be doing any of that stuff if it wasn't for those people. So moving on to item G4, City of GALT Special Sponsorship Program Preview for Fiscal Year 25 and 26. Ms. Garcia?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. I'm getting there. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here today. So today, I'm going to be presenting the special event sponsorship program that we received 12 applications for sponsorship. Every year, we receive these applications set forth by the policy goal and objective that is to promote the city of GALT as a desirable place to live, visit, and do business, promoting GALT as a visitor destination, and bringing tourism-associated revenue to the city, enhancing the quality of life and well-being, advance the city's commitment and pride in being a multicultural community, and encourage the development of neighborhood identity and pride. It also aligns with the City of GALT's mission statement and our strategic plan. Our sponsorship request is not to exceed 5,000 per event unless the City Council approves a higher amount, when it's set the entire budget for the special event sponsorship program. This sponsorship presentation will also include soft-cost examples, our rental facilities, and any staff costs during regular schedule; hard-cost examples are janitorial services, any staff cost outside their work schedule, security services, or any tangible items. So on this slide, it has the 12 applicants that we received, applications for. And through the presentation, I'll go individual through them. So the first one is the FFA Farm to Fork Dinner. It's going to be located at the Fourth Street Promenade on September 13th. They do charge a ticket fee, and total sponsorship cost would be $1,745, which would be covering the two police officers. The GALT Sunrise Rotary is their Taco de Mayo. It's at Littleton Center. There is an admission cost. They don't have a set date yet, but that $450 fee would cover their security service This is a new application for this year. It's the GALT High Parade. They're asking for street closures. It's a free community event. Their total city sponsorship would be $1,0250, which would cover police service costs and public works street closure cost. Liberty Ranch Homecoming Parade, city street closure request, free community event, and this one for sponsorship would be $2,085. And of course, that covers the police service cost and the public works street closure costs combined in that total. The GALT High Alumni Association Dinner is going to be at Littleton Center. It's scheduled for October 5th. There is a ticket entry fee. It covers total of...
The dinner is September 27th.
Okay.
These are my organization, so we have to...
Ma'am, if you'd like, well, I'm going to, I'll allow public comment on the presentation. You can come up, and you can say that into the microphone so we can hear you better. I'll call you, no, when she's done with it, I'll call you up. Thank you.
So we'll update that, and then, so the total cost for that event would be $540. The rental fee is not included in that cost, as it's waived one time per year for nonprofits, and that is security services fees of $540. The Laheim of GALT Trick or Treat on Fourth Street event is a street closure request on October 25th. It's a free community event. The street closure is $4,750, which is public works cost, and there is no police service cost for this event. The Children's Makers Market is a new request for this sponsorship window. It is for city street closures. It's going to be in conjunction with our Saturday market on November 1st. Free community event. The street closure cost would be $5,000, and that's for the materials of the equipment to close the street down. The GALT Chamber of Commerce requested, submitted five applications. The first one is the Wine, Beer, and Food Event, which is $3,000 that they requested. The Old Town Dinner and Dance is $5,000. The Fall Harvest Festival requested was $5,000. Miracle on Fourth Street was $2,500, and the Veterans' Gazeebo was $5,000. And then those requests, what they were going to apply them to was marketing, city staff cost, traffic control equipment, or any other requests that are elements they may have used for. So the total for the 12 sponsorships requests is $37,220. And for this evening, we're just reviewing the 12 special sponsorship applications that we received for '25, '26. I do have several applicants that are here that'd like to speak on behalf of their submission. Is it okay if I bring them up?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. So, GALT Sunrise Rotary.
Grace Molson, Board Member, GALT Sunrise Rotary. Our Taco de Mayo that we do is usually in May or the end of April, depending upon when May 5th falls. What we do is, we have a taco dinner. We charge 10 bucks for three tacos, rice and beans, and the $405 security fee actually would pay for a scholarship for one of our students that we provide each year. It would help us a little bit. It's our only dinner fundraiser that we do throughout the year, and the proceeds would also help with the big community dinner that we do in December that is free to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Molson.
And I have a representative from the GALT High Parade.
Hi, I'm Mariah Bray. I am co-activities director of GALT High School, and we are trying to restart GALT High's homecoming parade tradition. It went away during COVID, and then with some of the C Street projects, it wasn't able to happen. Obviously, Liberty's has been happening for the last five years, and it means a lot to our students to be able to bring back this piece of tradition. I know the pre-approved route is just directly down A Street, but we have hopes of expanding our parade in the future to include maybe going to Greer and Valley Oaks and being able to connect more with our elementary students in the district as well. And also, I want to correct, the date is supposed to be September 26th. I think it said October 5th on this. So it's September 26th will be the parade.
All right. Thank you.
And I have the Children's Makers Market, Becky.
So we were hoping to redirect some of those funds towards a street closure so that we could take some of that money and use it for other things. So she said the street closure, but we have hard costs. We pay about $1,200 in the tables and the table covers for the kids. We like to cover those table, we like to offer that, those items to them at no cost so that they all have a nice table and their booth looks nice. We provide shirts for our judges and our volunteers. We need a new sound system because ours is shot for that. Also, the big balloon arches, the bathrooms we have to pay for, and I can't read my own writing because I'm blind. Oh, and we give them each a swag. So each, each kid gets a swag bag. So there is hard cost to us, and we like those kids to feel special. So last year, we had 56 booths and 90 kids. This year, we had 96 booths and over 200 kids. So it's growing like crazy, and we want to be able to make it a really great experience for them, so.
All right. Thank you.
Gail Weber.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Gail, Mayor, I'm Gail, sorry, Gail Weber, and I am the Board President and also one of the volunteers at Laheim of GALT. We are looking forward to having our fifth annual Trick or Treat event on Fourth Street. It has grown from about 300 kids the first year to, we estimated, 1,200 kids came through last year. This is a totally free event. Only thing that costs anybody any money is the candy. We ask everybody to be prepared to serve at least 1,000 kids. Laheim is already ready with our 1,500 treat bags to hand out. This event gets bigger and bigger every year, and we're really hoping to have it again this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kell.
GALT High Alumni?
Glad I could be here to talk. My name's Rebecca, and I am the Treasurer of the GALT High Alumni Association. And this, let you know that this community means a lot to me. My mother-in-law, my husband, myself, and our two granddaughters graduated from GALT High School, and we also had a granddaughter and two grandsons graduate from Liberty High. So it, the association has been around since 1990, and it's, has been remained committed to one mission, honoring seniors from the GALT High School District, so both Liberty Ranch and GALT High. And so we like to award scholarships to our seniors of these communities. Now, GALT High Association is celebrating its 31st, 35th year of hosting our annual dinner. We only have one fundraiser, and that is our annual dinner. And so we were hoping that in order to raise money for our scholarships, if you, we could waiver the costs of the security, that would pay for at least half of a scholarship. Most of our scholarships are minimum $1,000, and we try to make them as large as we can and help as many students as we can. So I've, you've been nice enough to waive those costs before for security, and so I'm just asking that hopefully that you'll do that again this year. So thank you. And our event has been changed. We usually do it the first Saturday of October, but when we went in to make the reservation for that night, it had already been taken. So we had to change our date, so we're now going to be on the 27th of September. So hopefully, we'll get back to the first Saturday of October for next year. But thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? This year, we did ask for a few different things. We've been hosting wine, beer, and food for the last several years. We are at a place where Littleton is at capacity. We can no longer add any additional businesses or grow the guest count, and so our hope is that we can take it to a different location and be able to expand that footprint and include more local businesses with that. The Old GALT Dinner Dance is something that we have hosted for the last three years, well, this will be the third year. And our hopes is that it will continue to be kind of a partnership for the years when we don't have the Old GALT Festival, so that we kind of keep that in people's minds. We did ask this year for some support for the Miracle on Fourth Street trees that are down on Fourth Street. So far, that has been sponsored by the Chamber and the local businesses. And as it continues to grow and expand, it is open to all businesses in the city of GALT, so that those who aren't directly in the path of the holiday market can still participate and have the opportunity to advertise. The biggest one that I would like to address with you all is on the Veterans' Gazeebo. So today, I am accompanied by members of our local Veterans of GALT group, as well as some of our community organizations and community members. So esteemed Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and staff, I'm excited to share with you a heartfelt initiative dedicated to honoring our veterans in GALT. So back in May of 1910, a group of local business leaders leased a parcel of land from the Southern Pacific Railroad nestled between Front Street and the railroad. The group of business leaders was the GALT Chamber of Commerce. Fueled by a vision to transform the land into a beautiful park for our community, this historical information actually comes from the GALT Gazette dated May 21st of 1910. So fast-forward 115 years, almost to the day, the park we now recognize is the Fourth Street Promenade. It has seen numerous changes and renovations over the years. Today, we're here to request that the city once again embrace the vision from 1910 and enhance the park to create a dedicated space that honors our veterans. This location is frequently used for community gatherings, including Saturday markets, the Old GALT Festival, Farm to Fork, and many others. We are currently seeking a special events grant to move forward with our plans for Veterans of GALT Gazeebo. We've collaborated with Thomas Shory of Shory Architecture, Design, and Build, a GALT High alum, who has integrated feedback from our veterans, the Chamber, city staff, and the community. Thomas has designed a gazebo that resonates with the history of Fourth Street, drawing inspiration from McFarland Ranch, the Railroad Depot, and the Ray House Museum. We kindly request the city's approval for this special events project, allowing us to obtain the necessary permissions from the railroad to construct the gazebo honoring our veterans, complete with benches representing each branch of the military. The materials you see before you include the inspiration boards, detailed enhancements... The materials you see before you include the inspiration boards, detailed enhancements, an aerial view, and the initial renderings of the Veterans' gazebo. This design seeks to establish a multifunctional space for events capable of hosting speeches, bands, extra seating, and a layout that can adapt to various uses. Whether orientated toward 4th Street or the promenade, the veterans envision this to be a space that the community can benefit from and enjoy. We hope that you share our enthusiasm for this project.
Kat. Kat, I know you have a lot of veterans that showed up tonight to, not only for their proclamation earlier, but also in support of the project. I know some of those have been working with you. So just to ask you a few questions about the project for just the public watching that is not present here, and I know that some of you in the crowd, I don't know if you can see this picture, but we don't only have a slideshow, but maybe in the future we could have something posted online or something. But so the idea of this is, there used to be a gazebo in the park. It was there when I was a child. It was much smaller, but it was, got old and they disassembled it.
It's in your pamphlet. There's a snapshot of it.
Yeah, exactly. So the idea of this is to have, it's not just a veterans memorial that where we can honor veterans, but it's also a functional, like you could have, when you have events in the park, you could have, like a band could be in there possibly, if people speaking arranged, could speak from there. It's kind of like, I envision like, every small town has like the town square, there's like that gazebo, so it's kind of like that.
Yes, and when you look at it, you'll see that the way that it was designed was to allow for it to be multifunctional. So, you know, whether a band is in there on a Saturday market, they can still be facing 4th Street. If there's an event on the promenade, it can be facing towards the park. That's why we built it kind of without the walls. The biggest request that the veterans had was that they wanted it to be utilized by the community and to be able to be part of the community events.
Right. And so where would the potential funding, I mean, you're asking the city for the $5,000, that's just to get the ball rolling, but ultimately, what is the idea where this funding would come from?
So ultimately, our next step would first to be reaching out and working with the railroad to get approval once the city, if the city moves forward. And so that would be the very next step. If the railroad does approve it, then we would move forward with fundraising. And so the veterans have been working on ideas, as well as the A to Z Foundation is someone who's interested in partnering with that on the fundraising.
All right. Does any of the council have any questions for Kat on any of the items or any of the events that she mentioned that the Chamber's bringing forward?
Yeah, there is no question, but I would like to make a statement, this is a good project. And I believe there is to improve this project, it can go to different agencies, but if that project prove, I certainly, at a council level, we can help you, whatever Chamber or veteran needed. At my personal level, we will help to this. I really like their project, and I will support their project.
Yvonne?
I just want to say, one of the unfortunate articles that we had to run while I was at the paper was when the VFW disengaged and was no longer here. And what, I'm very happy that the city moved forward with the Military Banner Program for currents, people currently serving. So this project right here, I think, is, it should have happened long ago. We should have been honoring those who've served. And so I'm very happy that this is moving forward, that this is on the table, and I, like Mr. Sandu, am very supportive of honoring our people. And they, not only did they sacrifice for us, but even in something to honor them, they want to give back to the community. They continue to serve us even though they're, some of them are retired and, you know, moving on with their lives outside of the military, but they, they want us to be part of the community. So I just, that just says so much about them. So I'm very happy to see this project.
I'll add on to what everybody else says, and I probably speak for everybody up here, but if there's anything the city can do to help with this situation and give back to all of the individuals that gave so much to us, that I'm in 100% support of it, and if there's anything we can do.
All right. Well, look forward to seeing how this thing develops. And thank you, not only to Chamber, but to everybody else who's put in the event, all of you that spoke, to, you know, LaHeim, to Galt High, to the Rotary, and all the organizations that put on all the events. It's funny, I see all these events, and I'm thinking like, I always, makes me think of these comments I see on social media where they said, "There's nothing going on in town." Like, what is there going on? I'm just like, there's, sometimes we, these events can't even be scheduled because, like someone mentioned, that they overlap, and some people have to move their dates because there's some other big, you know, to-do going on. So thank you to all, you know, of you that spearhead all these little projects and these events and stuff, because they're all important in their own way. Honestly, it keeps our town feeling like a small town with these events, so. Do we have any questions overall about, this is just a presentation, this is not an action item, we just, it's a preview, right? So this will come back to council, a future date to approve?
We'll come back June 3rd for the approval.
Okay.
I actually do have a question on a couple of things. One, the Rotary's taco, it's got a clever name, and I just forgot it. They also use the Littleton Center, correct? And so that's part, they get that for free because we do that one time, right? The other question is, the difference between the road closures between the two high school parades, is Liberty Ranch closing more streets? Is that why?
Yes, I believe so.
That's more expensive? And then, and I apologize because Armando called me to ask if I had any questions, and I said no, but then they came, sorry. The Makers Market, which I think is a phenomenal thing, I, it's going to be part of the market, the Saturday market, but still up?
Yeah, so we're expanding, so it's similar to what we did in May. It's expanding from 5th Street all the way to 7th Street.
Okay, and so that's where the extra cost is coming in?
Right.
And that, the extra cost is just because of those, what, two extra side streets?
All the traffic control equipment that we need to rent. So we looked for May, we looked at two options. One, to contract out, to have a company do it, and it was about $15,000 just for that expansion. So we did it in-house, and with the rental equipment, it was about $5,500.
Okay. I'm not against it, I'm just trying to understand why that might, you know, why that money.
Anything about that? Is that okay?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah.
We'll sit down.
Well, we can public comment, so go ahead.
It's the cost, because we are trying to get more kids to participate, and so we offer a lot of the stuff that normally they'd have to pay for themselves, and maybe they can't provide it. We want to sponsor kids so that no kid is turned away. That's how we got to 200 kids. So the extra money, so that we can make it an experience. You know, it is, they did partner with us, but it is separate, you know, it's called the Children's Makers Market, but it's a little bit different because we're trying to help those kids grow their business and learn how to be entrepreneurs. So we're going to do different things throughout the year, the workshops and try to help them be successful, but yeah. So if we have to pay for the street closure, then we don't have the extra stuff to help those kids, so that's what, that's what.
Yeah, I understand that. I was just, when it said it was part of the community event, I didn't understand, but because it's growing it, so I, I get it. Thank you.
All right. Is that everything, Jackie? All right, well, thank you very much for that. We'll look forward to some of those events, and we'll look forward to digging in deeper on those on the 2nd of June. So we'll be moving on next to item G5, which is the Independence Day Celebration Parade Route Update. I know Mr. Solis is not here tonight, so Ms. Garcia, you'll be filling in. Go ahead.
Thank you again. So today, I have the privilege of sharing the Independence Day Parade Route for 2025. As you're aware, the parade route discussion was removed from the agenda, and we had cancellation of a meeting on May 6th. So in light of that, staff felt it was necessary to take proactive steps and plan and continue the timeline for a decision of the parade route for 2025. So for July of this year, this is the temporary street parade route that we will go with, which was the alternate route that we used for December. And then after July, we will go out, and we, city staff will schedule two meetings with, one will partner with the Galt Chamber, hosting any local businesses to come and talk to us and get feedback and about what route they prefer. Either the alternate route or going back on C Street, or if they have alternate ideas. We will also have a second meeting to be held for the community at large, and we'll promote that on social media to bring people aware that this is a option for them to give us their feedback. And that's it. Does anybody have any questions? Once we do have this information, then we will come back to council, gathering all the feedback that we gained, and well as the fees and the cost that would be for each route that was proposed. Questions?
Any questions for Ms. Garcia from the council?
Just, just not a question, but just for the community information, or just if you can clarify, there was, almost two months ago, there was a meeting, and council asked you to come back with a different option. And I see there is only one option. So that you guys don't have enough time to look up a different option, or there was some other reason why we don't have a different?
I believe it was timing because of the cancellation and then the rescheduling of the meeting, and staff needed to move forward with submission of the parade route and sending participant information. We went with the alternate route this year.
So Vice Mayor, if I may add, currently, they are not selecting like a permanent route. The idea is to go out to the community, as Jackie, Ms. Garcia recommended, and then come back with a couple of different alternatives to present to council and get council feedback on which to choose. So based on council feedback, at that time, we thought we needed to do a little bit more research to figure out what the permanent route would look like. So July 4th will be a continuation of the temporary route, and then a permanent route will be selected after it, with input from the community and council.
Yeah, that, you know, that's why my understanding, when we do permanent route, we should be a more discussion, what we're going to do. This is a temporary, so this year, so next year can be a more discussion because the C Street is the main street. And everybody knows this city. I have a lot of calls, they was asking why we don't, because that street is already completed, it's not under construction no more. So thank you for, you know, the future, you're going to have reach to the community, so satisfy, we will satisfy the community what will be the permanent route.
100%. And I want to thank Parks and Rec and Ms. Garcia and Mr. Solis for taking the initiative to reach out to the public and create this program, to figure out a good alternative and to be proactive in seeking out community input.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say that, you know, I think people need to realize, there's a lot of logistics that goes into the parades. These parades are huge. If anybody has attended them or watched them, which I think everybody in this room probably has, you know, they're, they're huge. They've become massive logistic old events to put on with all the street closures, and yet the, everything has to be factored in, you know, where does traffic go? Where does people that are not watching the parade that are need to traverse, how do they get to and from certain parts of town? How are their main thoroughfares, you know, if there's, if there's a fire and fired, you know? So it's very tricky when you, you know, put together these routes. And I think it's good that we're revisiting, you know, revisiting this just to see. I know there was some misinformation floating around that we were not going to go back to C Street because of the new design, you know, wouldn't allow vehicles or whatever, and all that's completely false. Basically, we're sticking with this route now because of, like you said, there was not enough time to change logistics and go back. But I want to remind everybody, you know, this parade route has actually been different, many different times. We used to have much different parade routes. We used to go all the way on the east side, come back. I don't know how many different parade routes there's been in the last 20 years, but from time to time, I think it's good that we visit this and decide if, you know, we want to continue with this route, and maybe for a few years, there'll be a different route, and then maybe we'll go back to a different route. And I think that there's nothing wrong with that because I think that it allows different businesses and different people to be part of the parade route, and it's not always just the same, you know, thing. So it's good that we visit. So I look forward to the input you guys are going to get, and we'll see kind of where people's feelings are. I think both parade routes that we've recently, you know, the one we have now, and then the C Street Traditional we've had for some time, I think both of those parade routes have, have goods and bads to them, so. But I'll look forward to seeing what you guys find out from the public, so. Is there any public comment on this particular item?
We have no public comment.
Okay, if you'd like to make a comment, you can fill out a speaker card real quick and bring it up, we'll give you a moment. So just while she's doing that, Jackie, just to be clear, this public outreach will happen between, before the Christmas parade. So potentially, the parade route could be different or same, whatever, for the, for the Christmas parade, right?
Yes, we plan on kicking off the community meetings after 4th of July, so we'll hit the ground running and get out the outreach.
You can just hand it to Rose over here. All right, thank you, Jackie.
You're welcome.
You can go ahead and go to the podium, mess and speak.
I actually just have a quick question on this because regarding Galt High versus Liberty's Parade. Currently, the approved parade route for the high school is only directly from Brewster's to Galt High, which is only going down A Street. But in the past, Galt High's homecoming parade used to include the elementary schools and then come all the way down 4th and down A Street. How do we go around approving new parade routes, and what does that process look like for the city?
Yeah, you would need to get with Parks and Rec about that, start that process with them. Obviously, closing streets and all that is, logistics can be expensive because of the cost of barriers and things. So get with them, and you could, they could look at possibilities with you, and then you could look at the future if you want to do whatever. So you can get Ms. Garcia behind you as information, and she would be your point of contact to sit down at some point.
Okay. Beautiful. Thank you.
All right. Without further comment, we will move on to our general public comment period. So Ms. Rose, if you can please read her statement.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for a brief response to questions, no discussion or actions may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves a right to shorten the timeframe for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda.
Okay. I'm going to wait a minute for some people to make their way out. I just want to remind everybody, this is the general public comment period, so I kind of, from time to time, will reiterate this to the public. This is where you are allowed to speak on non-agendized items. You can speak on anything you want, as it pertains to the city of Galt, on items that are not already agendized. If you are here to speak on an agendized item, I would ask that you would wait and save your comments for when we get to that specific agenda item, because that's, it'd be more appropriate for that. So for items outside of the agenda, you're welcome to fill out a speaker card on either side of the back, bring that forward. And to remind you too, that we typically don't engage with you, so if you're up there asking questions about this or that, you're typically not going to have a back and forth with the council. This is just an opportunity for you to speak, and we will be receptive to that, and then we can facilitate something beyond that, possibly after you're done speaking. So with that said, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mr. Kenley.
Good evening, council members. It's getting harder and harder for me to get around. I noticed that when you get past 70, you don't move easy. Well, the alleyway between D and E Street behind the Galt Place apartment has turned into a driving obstacle for us 24/7. The senior tenants have to maneuver their cars driving out of the building. Sometimes it requires sharp turns when cars are illegally parked in the alleyway, stop and go, because it's now a one lane of traffic instead of the two-way in which it was attended for. We have to wait for uncoming cars to stop, we have to flag them on, and sometimes we play chicken. No one pays attention to the legal no parking signs posted by the city. The fire hydrant in the alley can get blocked. Access to the fire department's ladders that are posted alongside our building in case of fires might not be accessible. Accessibility to the multifamily buildings across from Galt Place, in case of a fire, accessing the rear of the buildings would be impeded. How are they going to get the hoses and stuff if cars are parked there? Also, the red bus stop zone in front of Galt Place needs 24/7 access for driveway pickups and drop-offs. Handicapped buses from the health agencies come and pick us up. Tenants are picked up by their children and friends. And basically, when it's blocked, they have to cross the street to get on. It's not a two-day take-up of the space for the recycling garbage cans. We need the curb to get on and off the bus safely. It's a longer drop-down to the It's a longer drop-down to the street level. Also, music from vehicles are getting louder and louder in this city. Basically, they were getting fined of $1,000 when caught. Could the fines be re-initiated to curb the nuisance? It seems like it's new people who moved into this town feel they can blast the music any way they want. The motorcycle patrol would be nice use. It's been under control until now, but it's becoming a bad habit. Especially around my area. This is blasting the music. Some people are having three-foot speakers on the porch blasting, blasting. I guess they don't have a living room, so they use it outside. And now they put the speakers in their trucks and they're blasting all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I'm sure the chief can bring your concerns about the alley and such to his, to his officers. Thank you, Chief. I've also noticed as you get older, the music gets louder. All right. Next public comment?
I have no more public comment. Everything else is on an agenda.
All right. All right, moving on to item I, reports by City Council members on regional boards, commissions and committees. I guess we can do our normal reports, but the main item here is the cap-to-cap 2025. So I guess we'll start with Mr. Pratton.
All right, let's cover let's cover outside of the cap-to-cap first. I had a couple of things I went to. April 24th SAC Metro Air Quality Management Meeting in Sacramento. Nothing really to report out on that other than I was there and nothing too exciting. Also, let's see, May 7th was the LAFCO meeting, which I was not able to attend because that was the day we were coming back from the cap-to-cap. And May 12th was our cast meeting with the schools and in city. So nothing really to report out there. It was a good meeting, had a few notes, but again, nothing too exciting there. So moving on to the cast-to-cast, cap-to-cap. So cap-to-cap started on the 5th. We flew out. There were, it was a lot. So when I first signed up for this thing, I thought, well, you know, how much can you accomplish in two days of, two days of meetings, right? Yeah, two days was a lot. It's actually two and a half and there was a lot because not all of our meetings were in the same place. So we started out with meetings in the morning, actually breakfast at 7 o'clock New York time. So it was a very early day with a big event in the evening 12 hours later. So in between, I think I covered, I was only able to cover that first day about four meetings or something, but we did congressional leadership. Let's see, opening breakfast was the 7:00 AM. 10 o'clock was a policy briefing for Civic Amenities. That was at the hotel. Noon, we went to Business Climate Office with Congressman Doris Matsui. So that's when we were actually in the halls of Congress and it was first time I've been there. We were, you know, the cap-to-cap is a, is actually an event, there was 450 delegates. So it's the largest delegates that, that go to, to our Washington DC. And the, the idea of this thing is to, is, is really to support Northern California and our Sacramento region. So we're there to support Sacramento region. But I have to say, the first meeting we had with Doris Matsui, Amy Mendez kind of stole the show and got us some, some great airtime with Ms. Matsui. And so it was very productive right off, right from the get-go. So then we had to go to, you know, other locations, Economic Development Administration. We did a we had a little off time in the evening for that one and we're fortunate enough to do a a tour of the Capitol. That was awesome. So on the next day, Congressional Leadership Forum. Doris Matsui started a, a meeting that was just a general meeting. Then we went to Civic Amenities where we did a, a walking tour of the Capitol Riverfront. It was very interesting. Talked a lot about things that definitely would, would affect us in the future. More Business Climate Meetings, Small Business Administration was a whole nother place we had to go to. Security getting in and out of these things. It was, it was running. So for me, my vote is yes, we definitely need to continue to attend this. I think it was very good for Northern California business, but I also believe the city of Galt was very well represented. Don't know that we need to send the whole council every time. Maybe, maybe not. I think it just depends on what issues we have going. There may be times where we need to do that because, because of specific things, but you know, I have it on my calendar for next year, but I, you know, I think Tim and, and Bonnie did, you know, a great job of, of getting out there and getting things done. Of course, as I said, Amy and John Griffin was also with us and I think it was very productive. So I will definitely continue to support it in the future. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me the opportunity to, I'm gonna be very short. I'm not gonna repeat what the other council members said. We are, this is cap-to-cap meeting there from the Sacramento to Motte Palatine. There's a 450 delegate. They went to the Washington DC. And the Washington DC, we're looking for the fund for the city. Any federal funding. Every city, they, they fund from the local fund, the funds come from the state, the funds come the federal. And that's the, our advocacy was going over there, talking to the congressman, whoever they have the authority to give some money. And there was a seven member from city of Galt. We went over there, four council member and three city staff. And they have, they make the different teams and I think they have eight and nine teams and staff know that. But I join a couple teams, business, climate, economic development and transportation. And we advocate and we talked to our own Congresswoman Matsui. You know, we do talk to these congressmen locally here, but it's different when you go over there and you talk to these congress authority and then you talk to their staff. And then when you talk to them person to person, you get their phone number. And then you can also behind the back and you, back here, you can communicate. And that's the purpose. I believe we went over there to get some kind of federal funding for get back to this, this city. Because we need some funds on the cross town, the new cross town walnut. And we need some other purpose too. So that's why we went over there. And the other thing is networking. When we went over there, we talked to other cities, city manager and get more knowledge. We talked to the other council member and we also tell our problem, what kind of deficiency we feel in our city and how we improve it. And how they're doing on the other city. So I believe this is, I know there's a quite well money when we was approve it. And I believe it is worth it. And same thing, the council member had said, it might be now a need for nine people next time, but there's certainly some individual need to go to advocate how we get the federal money. And that's it. All of, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Reed?
So I got the opportunity to sit on the transportation team. And then after arriving in Washington, because of my background and thanks to the fire chief and other individuals, I was also able to sit on the public safety team as well. So we had several meetings on top of all the general sessions that Matt talked about. We were able to meet with Senator Omne Barra, Adam Schiff, Assembly Members Guaramendi, Titus, Matsui and Mike Thompson, all to talk about different projects that were set up for the Sacramento area. And how, I'll just talk a little bit about how they specifically influence in Galt. So one of them was the Farm to Fork Route Initiative, which is the rural road rehabilitation in South Sacramento, which is us. So that will make the roads better in the rural areas outside of Galt. The Kramer Road Extension, so Kramer Road comes off a grant line to continue that all the way over to I-5. So people don't have to come, come down into Galt and cause more traffic taking Twin Cities or however they decide to go over there. They're talking about improving the rail frequency, train frequencies through the, between San Joaquin and Sacramento to increase the opportunities for those types of travel. That was for the transportation. For public safety, there's a lot of talk about with the new federal administration of a lot of those fundings getting taken away. So they were there primarily trying to not ask for more funding, but for funding not to be taken away. And those things were to address first responders, mental health and wellness. A lot of grants that support public safety. So our SAFER, our firefighter grant, the cops grant, the urban search and rescue grant programs. All trying to make sure that those stay at least at the funding where they're at right now so they can provide the service that we're all used to. And then emerging technologies and cybersecurity. We all know cybersecurity is becoming a thing. And they're trying to make sure that the funding that we have is still there for us to be able to do those types of things. So those were the projects that have specifically to do with Galt. And I, it was a great time of meeting everyone and having those, like Matt said, it was meeting after meeting after meeting and getting into some of these buildings. We had to wait in line for security of up to an hour just to get in for a 30-minute meeting. So it made for some long days. Long days of walking in the rain sometimes, but it happens. But I think the team that went did a lot of good things and represented Galt in a very positive and great way.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Mr. Rodriguez?
So just to break up before I talk about SACOG. I did attend on April 17th, a SACOG meeting and there one of, and I can't remember Greg Chu, what was he, what was his role?
He, I don't, I don't recall his specific title, but he focused a lot on housing and, you know, arena allocations for the various jurisdictions.
So we had, they had a retirement, this Mr. Greg Chu, who apparently helps with, in Galt a lot. And so it was sad to see all that institutional knowledge and, and energy move, move away from SACOG, but we were able to thank him for his service for, he was with SACOG since 2004. So he was there for a while. They also, we had a couple of presentations. One was by Wes SAC. And I'm gonna clarify this for anyone listening. I am not at all in any way, shape or form encouraging this for Galt. But they gave an interesting presentation, what they called, I believe, tiny homes on wheels. And any of, what they have been doing, I guess, is in infill small lots in the middle of a housing development that didn't get developed or individually just sitting there. They have apparently purchased tiny homes apparently on wheels and have put them up so about 10 to 12 to a lot. I don't know how big their lots were. And so they are very hard pushing for the rest of the Sacramento Valley to do something similar to that to help with housing. So it, but it was interesting. It was interesting to hear their take on it. They had a lot of speakers come and speak about it. So it's something to kind of watch and see if it works, if it doesn't work and, and hopefully our local decisions don't get taken away from us with that. The other thing that they had at that meeting was a gentleman who is, all that he's done is transportation and roads for his whole life all over the nation. And listening to him, it was very inspiring and made me realize that although we are small, we do know that our build-out is about 50,000 and I don't, I think that we need to be a little more cognizant of what transportation within our boundaries looks like. And I don't mean our cars. I mean, you know, are we going to need a better and more robust dial-a-ride system or something? We have a lot of senior homes coming on, on online and what does that look like? Are we, are, are we giving accessibility to shopping centers for them? Are they able to go to the doctor easily and not necessarily have to drive themselves? So it's just something to think about that as we're coming up on our strategic plan and our general plan that we might want to plan for that and start thinking about bus stops and things like that. So that was really interesting. And then I, on May 12th, attended the Policy and Innovation Committee. That was pretty, pretty quick. We had a lobby update. And, and then we reviewed cap-to-cap. So I'm not going to go into all the details that everybody else did for cap-to-cap. Just because reiterating, I'm, I'm glad that everyone felt the way I did that it was definitely worth going. I'd like to piggyback a little bit on what Mr. Pratton was talking about that first meeting with Doris Matsui. It was actually really quite interesting. None of us were expecting to, to speak. We were there to support. It was our first real, you know, gritty meeting that we were gonna have. And we all sat there and that spotlight just went right on Amy thankfully, because I don't think the rest of us could have done anything. And, and she wasn't expecting it and boom, she just went, you know, like she had planned it for, you know, the last two months or something. It was great. And what, I don't know if others caught the nuance of what happened. One of the, part of the discussion was about our flood plain and Congresswoman Matsui said, well, we're doing a survey along the Kasumas River. Are you part of that? And we all just went, you know, I don't know. And she turned to her LD, basically, basically her second in command and said, are, you know, are they on it? And he's like, no. And she goes, well, why not? And he's busily writing it down. And so it was little things like that that happened throughout during one of the events where we thought we were gonna have dinner, but we didn't. I had sat down for a few minutes and had other leaders and people who I would never have thought to talk to came and spoke, spoke to me and we shared some concerns, some shared concerns. It was very interesting. And the other thing I thought was very pivotal, something you just cannot get by hanging out here in Galt or even hanging out somewhere in Sacramento hoping it happens, but in preparing for meetings, Ms. Mendez and Mr. Pratton and Mr. Sandu and I were sitting in a random room and what's his name? Trolls, can't remember his last name. He walked in to pick up something. He goes, I just keep forgetting to tell you, Amy. And he starts down this avenue and she's busily writing it down. Those type of, type of conversations may never have happened. But now we have these avenues, these things to, that might not pan out, but they, but if we not, if we weren't there, they definitely wouldn't have panned out. So I definitely think that it was worth it. And just so that, you know, one little other experience that we had that probably didn't mean anything to anybody else, but we were able to take that Capitol tour at night. So there wasn't very many people there and a congressman that, he, he had invited us to join his night tour. He's not from California and we just had a connection. And so he, we were down in the tunnels and he was taking us and kind of talking. So we didn't really know him. He didn't know us. But he knew that we were from Galt because that was part of the conversation and passing us in the tunnels was another congressman. Never seen him, had no idea who he was. I don't think any of us did. And the congressman that was with us says, hey, I bet you don't know where Galt is. And he kind of turned and he goes, yeah, it's in California. And who was this guy? He actually, and I found out later, he's from Nevada. And apparently someone must have been in a meeting with him at some point or somewhere. This guy heard about Galt while on the hill from another state. So we got around, that's for sure. Hopefully it was a good reputation. And just last for comic relief, Tim is selling himself short when he said walking through the rain because he literally had to have his suit cleaned or dry cleaned because it came down and and it's like he stepped in a swimming pool. So, but it was, it was a good experience.
All right, well, thank you for all that. I unfortunately didn't go. I had to hold down the fort here. You know, someone has to stay behind in case something bad happened in your travels. I have to be the designated survivor, you know? Be the sole council member still. Yeah. I mean, contrary to what you guys said, I heard you guys tossed the place. I was like, I heard like those people from Galt.
I don't want to talk about that.
It was a mess. No, I'm just kidding. No, I, yeah. Honestly, but thank you for what you guys did in going and advocating for us and doing all that. So, I do appreciate it. I, I wish I could have gone and it sounds like a good time. So, unfortunately. But I did go to something that was almost as good. I went to a cast meeting. I can't one-up you guys on your DC trip. But we had a cast meeting, which is cities and schools together. City manager was there, chief was there. Always a good meeting. We meet every quarter with the superintendents of the schools and some of the elected members. And the, like I said, the city manager's there. And it's a good, it's a good way for the city to sit down with school leadership and talk about things that overlap with, with the school. And we had some important topics that went over regarding the Liberty Ranch project and how it encroaches and touches the Liberty Ranch High School. Some stuff, stuff going on with that, that we, we talked about. School safety. We talked about some, some presentations and some cyberbullying slash suicide awareness-type stuff that's kind of being incorporated into like a safety month that the school's doing. So, a lot of information that we share within that. I'm not going to go into any specific details other than that. But it's always a good meeting. I look forward to them. I think it's important that we have a really good dialogue. And I just want to mention that it was set in that meeting by, by one of the long-term high school board members that, that previous meetings, back way back in the day, previous councils were very contentious. And the climate in those meetings was not good. There was a very, not a good working relationship between the city and the school leadership. So, I'm glad that that's not the case with us and that we have a good streamlined relationship. So, other than that, it's the only official thing that I did that I want to report about. So, with that, I will move on to our next item J. By the way, gentlemen, stand up. You're welcome to have a seat. You guys don't have to stand. I know if you're waiting to speak, but you can have a seat. I hate to, I feel bad you're standing there the whole time. Item J is our information consent calendar. And it is recommended that items 1 through 9 be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by council member. Does any council member have an agenda? Or I, I'm sorry, a consent item that they wish to pull for discussion? No? I do. Okay, number 5. All right, item J 5. It's the Wood Rogers Contract Additional Contingency for the Corillian Deep Well?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so Council Reed has requested item J 5 be pulled. So, with that, and then we have some public comment regarding the consent.
Yes, we do.
So, should I ask for those first, I guess?
Yes.
Okay.
Phyllis Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you, first of all, for all you do. You're well appreciated. And if they don't, then they got a problem. I have been in Galt now for many, many years. I've seen a lot of changes, all for the good. And it's because of people like you. So, thank you for serving. That's number one. Now, regarding the ordinance, I remember when it was discussed at the meeting regarding homing pigeons, as far as cleanliness, racing, and whatever. I've been raised with it since I was around 2 or 3 years old in the Bronx, New York, at the Bronx Homing Pigeon Club. When my father moved here, and I did in 1981, he wouldn't come here without his pigeons. There was a person in Elk Grove who backed my father, let him have them, and he was quite happy. And unfortunately, you got a misrepresentation here. They're not called racing pigeons. They're called homing pigeons. But racing is part of it because they're an investment. You have a particular bloodline that you keep. You pay for the bands that, I know people know about the bands on their legs. You pay to put them in races. And the reason why they're calling homing pigeons is, that's what they do. They fly home. And judging by the winds, if they're in front, it's going to be a slow race. If it's going to be behind them, it's going to be a fast race. And people have the two kinds that they raise accordingly. So, having the ordinance as it was previously, I don't know if it's gone through the same way. But as far as the 10 pigeons, I don't think that that would be a feasible count that would be fair. As far as keeping them a certain way, keeping clean and whatever, yes, it's up to the owner, like any other pet owner, has to do that. But you have to also realize, a pigeon coop is not just a cage. In the pigeon coop, there are small barrier boxes that are maybe that big. Each section can have 8 or 10 of those little noxious-like. Each pigeon has their own little notch. So, you're not dealing with pigeons just running around or whatever. They have their own little spots in there. But when they're fed, yes, they're on the floor in what looks like a carrier. And it's got the bars on the side where they can peek their heads in and eat, yes. But as far as, I know that there's people that have complained about the smell or whatever. Other animals smell too. And you can only control it up to a certain point. But I think you have to remember, and I'll use it, my daddy, he should rest in peace, and my uncle. They're not gutter rats. They're homing pigeons. And treat them accordingly and the people that have them. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the information, Phyllis. Does any council, well, actually, this item has not been pulled for discussion, so.
I was going to say, is there any other public comment?
There's no other public comment on the consent items.
Okay. All right. With those comments, nobody wishes to change anything being pulled? Discussion, no? Okay. All right. With that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve item 1, which is receiving file warrants for a period ending May 8th of 2025. Item 2 will be minutes of the regular meeting for April the 15th. Item 3 is the adopt a ordinance 2025-7 of the Galt Municipal Code, Title 6 Animal Care. Item 4 is the authorize the Director of Public Works to sign the Memorandum of Understanding Regarding the Coordination of State Transportation Improvement Program Funding Applications and Communications on the Federal Funding Program for Sacramento County. Item 6, the approval of final map and subdivision improvement agreement for Elliott Ranch Units 2 and 3, Seco exempt. Item 7 is the cost road improvements at the Union Pacific Railroad Crossing, CIP 523D, and the Fourth Street Promenade Extension, CIP 524H. Approval of Agreements and Fund Appropriation. Item 8 is the Award of Uniform Service Contract. And item 9 is the Galt Swim Area Program License Agreement. Do I have a motion to move those 8 items?
Move.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Pratton. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item J 5, Mr. Reed.
So, I was just going to ask if Mr. Director Griffin could give us a little bit of explanation on the increases that are for the contingency, what they're going towards? I know you emailed me this already, but i-if we could just tell everybody else exactly, basically, the stuff you told me.
Yes, Council, yes, Councilmember Reed. The, there are 3 items we're asking for amendment to the existing scope of work with Wood Rogers for the Corillian, Corillian Well Water Plant and Reservoir Project. So, the, the primary item is the, or the changing materials for the test well. We, similar to what we have at Industrial, we have, we built the test well many years ago, but it was constructed in a manner where we could modify it and add it into our water system as a domestic water source. So, we want to make that change to how we construct the test well for the Corillian project. And in order to do that, there's a number of material changes, process changes, and that's what this, that's the first item on this amendment request. The second item is, when we submitted our permit for the well destruction for the existing Corillian well, Sacramento County Environmental Management Department came back with a number of conditions placed on the permit that we needed to comply with before, or as part of our well destruction process. So, that, those additional items identified by the county will cost roughly another $25,000. And then the last item is design service changes for the electrical control room. The facility, the Corillian facility has had a number of upgrades over the years, and there's a number of control panels. And there's, we're pretty much out of room to add any new control panels for the future project. So, the design change will be to consolidate and eliminate the unnecessary ones, consolidate the ones that we still need to operate, and then add room for future control panels. So, in a nutshell, those are the 3 changes. The total cost of these changes is roughly $228,000. Council had approved a prior contingency, and it wasn't enough to cover these costs. So, what we're asking for is, is $154,000, which will leave us $75,000 for future contingency needs as we move forward with this project.
And this well site is going to be the primary well site for most of the new construction that's going over there, correct?
This will be one of, this will be, serve as the primary well and also will help with some redundancy.
Yeah.
And with that one, I'm sorry, one more thing we get. Because with that, too, we are replacing the existing well that has failed. And we will also be, this new well will have a slightly higher production rate. So, it's accommodating both.
When they gave us, just for everybody's knowledge, when they gave us a tour of these, of these well systems, they showed us the older, I'm not going to say older, site that's still there right now. And they've done everything that they can to keep this up and running. And we were even surprised when we went to the tour on how old this system appeared to us. So, I'm very happy that we're upgrading all of it and we're getting it to a point where it can be the redundancy for the rest of the city and provide the water for all of our future residents here. So, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Did I understand the staff report correctly that the test well, there's new requirements for it, too? And that's, that, we didn't know about that when we originally had that contract?
That is part of the reason that it is so costly is, is the new standards.
The new standards. That happens a lot in a lot of things. Okay, I just want to make sure.
And I just have one really first question. The funding for this is from Fund 13, the water fund for the well. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Griffin while we're on this subject? No? With that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve item J 5. I'll move. Moved by Councilmember Reed.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rodriguez. Have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Yes.
Motion's approved 5-0. Now, moving on to item K, Scheduled Matters Notice of Public Hearing. Do we have any this evening, Rose?
No, we do not.
All right, moving on to a regular calendar. Item L, first item is going to be from the city manager's office. Subject L1 is the Safe and Same Fireworks Ordinance. Mr. Reyes, can you please explain what this is?
Yes, I can. So, in addition to, well, good evening, Mayor and Council. This item pertains to the Safe and Same Fireworks Ordinance. Essentially, you did the first reading of it at our last council meeting. And after that meeting, it came to our attention that the ordinance ignores a council resolution that was passed roughly 10 years ago that limits the number of fireworks booths in the city to 4. And then it also limits the location of where they could be, which is 400 Fairway Drive, which is the city parking lot where the billboard is. So, the intent of this ordinance was essentially to provide stricter regulation for illegal fireworks, which this rereading of the ordinance will not impact. The only thing we're going to do with this revised ordinance is essentially incorporate that resolution by reference, so it doesn't get ignored, because we didn't even know it existed. So, this way, if it's in the ordinance, whoever is reading the ordinance in the future will always go back to that resolution. And then the second thing is also, in the ordinance that was read at the last meeting, there is a distance requirement from vegetation. And in our parking lot, there is landscaping. So, we're removing that item from the ordinance that was read at the last meeting. And we're making one slight other change. There's time limits on when they can sell fireworks on the 4th of July. The ordinance that you read at the last meeting was 11:00 PM on the 4th of July. This changes it to 9:00 PM. And this 9:00 PM is consistent, more consistent with the county and others in the region. So, those 3 changes are the only changes in this revised ordinance. So, we're required to essentially do the first reading over again. And that's it.
All right. Does anybody have any questions about what this item is? It's basically some housekeeping here to, just what we did last time?
I do. So, I just want to make sure that I got, I got this correct. Because we have firework stands all over the city.
No, we don't.
Well, so, before, we've had them on Twin Cities.
That's not the city.
Wait, I know, but they, they, don't we have one in the parking lot of?
They set up in the county, that's why they're there. No.
Oh, that's on the other side, never mind. Forget it. Thank you.
I know, it's confusing, that, that little spot there, yeah. Basically, in the city of Galt, they're only allowed to set up in that parking lot where the billboard is, and that's it.
Yeah.
So, it's all consolidated to one area, so.
So, that's not changing? That's still the only place in the city they can set up?
No, 100%. So, the intent is to honor the resolution limiting the number of fireworks in the city booths to 4 per year. And then there's a list that is held. And then, basically, if there were 4 that got this year on 4th of July, they get bumped down, and then a new group of 4 bumps up to make it equitable.
And just to reiterate to the public, because I know there's a lot of people here, this, this ordinance is not in any way hindering the use of, of legal fireworks in the city of Galt. We, we love celebrating the 4th of July, just like everybody else. We would do that. We're simply just doing some housekeeping, making sure that the, the nonprofits that have been, that this, this is one of their main fundraising, that they're allowed to continue selling safe fireworks and keep them safe and legal fireworks. What it also does is it comes with some, a lot of teeth with enforcement, and, and it really beefs up the penalties for people using illegal fireworks,[1656.74] it really beefs up the penalties for people using illegal fireworks, which have been quite a nuisance in Galt, and have been the result of some tragedies in years of late. So, I'm happy to see this. So, with that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve item L1.
I'll move to approve as posted.
Did you open for, sorry, Mayor, did you open for public comment? You're right, I did not. Thank you, sir. That's why we pay you the big bucks, Frank. You can speak two or three times in the meeting, it's always important, though. Do we have any public comment regarding this item?
We have no public comment.
All right.
All right. I'll put that back on the table.
All right. I need to read what we're, so I am looking for a motion to approve, to reintroduce and waive first reading by title only in an ordinance repealing or replacing the city of Galt municipal code, chapter 8.04 fireworks, to clarify permissions and prohibitions in the city related to fireworks, and strengthen fireworks regulations and enforcement in the city. Do I motion to approve?
I'll move.
Move by Councilmember Pratton. Seconded by Councilmember Reed. Have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Item approved, 5-0. All right. Moving item, moving on to the item we've all been waiting for. Thank you for all your patience, by the way, for people there on the Adair Way item. Tried to move through the meeting as quickly as possible. So, now, the next item is from the Public Works Department. The subject is Adair Way Options. Mr. Griffin.
The pointer to.
Be patient with me. I got you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. The presentation tonight is a discussion of options for the Adair Way, East Stockton intersection. As an overview of the presentation, tonight, I'll be going over prior direction received from council, providing a very brief summary of the Public Safety Committee meeting, discussing historical records and existing conditions, providing a number of options for council's consideration, giving staff's recommendation of which options to move forward with, and then providing opportunity for any questions. So, as a quick summary, staff received direction from council at two separate meetings. On February 4th, we were directed to obtain feedback from the Public Safety Committee meeting, Public Safety Committee at their March 24th meeting, and then on April 15th, we were instructed to provide a report with all feasible options. At the February 20, I'm sorry, at the March 24th Public Safety Committee meeting, these were the main subjects covered. So, first, the data packet that was provided in the staff report is the same data packet that was provided to the committee members. So, the, the first item in that report is the, the raw traffic data, and what you see here is a summary of the average daily traffic, the 85th percentile speed, and the peak hour ADT at Fermoy Way, on Adair Way, west of Fermoy and Adair Way, east of Fermoy. The packet does identify the locations where the, the hoses were placed for the collection of traffic data. What we saw also out of the data is that a majority of the traffic was observed between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Also presented to the Public Safety Committee was a summary of the accident reports for the area for the last five years. And again, the, on Adair Way between East Stockton and Fermoy, you know, we had one accident, one incident. Adair Way and Stockton Boulevard intersection, one accident, six incidents, and then Adair Way and Fermoy, zero accidents, eight incidents. So, these are specifically provided to us by the police department as part of the analysis. Other things that we shared with the Public Safety Committee were the potential impacts of a closure of Adair and East Stockton. What we expect to see should that intersection be closed is, traffic will not go away. Traffic will just find a different route to, to the intersection, and that will likely shift traffic to the intersection of Emerald Vista and Walnut, and then they will wrap around, head north, and then head west to then move up to Fermoy. And that route, the 85th percentile speed data on that leg was actually higher than the 85th percentile speed on the section of, of Adair Way on the, between Fermoy and East Stockton. So, at the Public Safety Committee meeting, the consensus of staff, both Public Works, Police, and Fire, was to keep the intersection open at this time, and the recommendation from the Public Safety Committee concurred with staff, but they also asked that we provide options to council for consideration, you know, minor changes to the intersection that would address both the reduction of vehicles, vehicular speed, and use of the roadway by Another item that we, you know, another item to talk about, some of the historical records and research that staff has conducted since the Public Safety Committee meeting, you know, one of the members of the public, Mr. Rod Pratton, has stated in the past that then-fire chief, Jim Templeton, had stated to him that the intersection was meant to be open for only a couple of years, and then closed at some point in the future. So, we, we researched the files that we had on that subdivision. Again, that subdivision is roughly 30 years old, and then we also looked at the circulation element of the 2030 general plan. Based on the records we have, and we were not able to find anything that identifies closing of that intersection in the long term. The design plans were pretty, were very clear that this was meant to be an intersection that was designed and to remain open. Other things that we looked at when we were analyzing what was the most appropriate action for this intersection is we looked at what nearby bike lanes there are in the area. We assessed the location of the Galt School's Transportation Department. Also recognized that the Lake Canyon Elementary School has a school zone right in that area as well. And then, we also compared, we just, just for comparison purposes, looked at traffic data collected at other nearby, or other similar intersections, and to see how they compared with Adair and Fermoy. This is a, this map here shows bike lanes in the immediate vicinity. You know, there are more bike lanes besides that are shown on this map, but what is very clear is you have a very small gap on Adair from East Stockton to, to Fermoy that is not striped for a bike lane, and that is one of our recommendations, is to stripe that for a bike lane. And again, the other existing condition with the, the Galt School's Transportation Department, that the secondary access point is at the intersection of Emerald Vista and Adair. And so, again, sending all that traffic into that area, we could have a potential conflict with the secondary access for the Transportation Department, and also that is a school zone as well for Lake Canyon. There is a gate for entrance to the, to the school on the, on the other side of Fermoy. And lastly, just for comparison, we looked at a couple of locations where we recently collected traffic data. So, you have Lake Canyon between Beaver Park and Fermoy. What you have is an ADT of roughly 1,700 cars per day with an 85th percentile speed of 35 miles an hour. That area is a 25-hour speed limit. And then, similar, we have, we had recently, recently collected data on Amador between Carroll and the 90-degree bend at Amador, and again, slightly lower ADT of about 1,500 cars per day, but the 85th percentile speed is roughly 47 miles an hour. The speed limit's 35. So, just looking at these other recent, similar areas, we found that, yes, there is a higher ADT in the area, talking, we're here to talk about tonight, for Adair and Fermoy, but the speeds that we're seeing are much closer to the posted speed limit than we see in other parts of town. So, staff came up with five options for consideration. With any analysis, there's always the do-nothing option, keep everything the way it is. The option number two is to extend the existing bike lane striping to fill in that gap. Number three is install speed control devices. Option four is to install a herringbone meeting island, and then option five is to, actually, to close the intersection. You know, the staff report went through a fairly robust analysis on those options, and staff's recommendation is to do a combination of option two and option four. The idea with the bike lane striping is the visual, with those striping, visual will hopefully cause drivers to slow down, and along with the herringbone island, that will also help, that will cause drivers to slow down as they enter the intersection. So, that is staff's recommendation. The, the cost of those improvements, we estimate to be roughly $100,000. So, with that, this concludes my presentation, and staff is looking for the council on how they wish to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. I have a couple of questions, just to tee this up. The comparable traffic studies that you did, specifically the Amador Avenue between Carroll Drive and the 90-degree bend at Amador, so, am I, am I assuming, if I understand correctly, this is Amador Avenue between Carroll and then going west to the 90-degree that's down by the, where the police department's at?
No, this would be near the new subdivision.
So, the other direction. So, between Carroll and, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then, the Lake Canyon, I haven't looked that one up on the map, but, well, clearly we can see, everybody likes to go at 10 miles an hour more than the speed limit.
No matter where.
Yeah. No matter where. My, you know, the interesting thing about the Adair is, well, first of all, I appreciate the research on trying to find, I, I don't discount the fact that Mr. Pratton was ever told by the prior fire chief, I knew Mr. Templeton. You know, conversations that happen face-to-face and stuff don't always have paper trails, and it's basically just, and unfortunately, he's gone now. So, I don't discount that that conversation happened, but obviously, there's no record of it in, in any of the formality of the subdivision and all that. But, I, I think what, what I'm kind of honing in on is, I, I think that just, you know, obviously, these numbers are kind of all over. Clearly, what I see is the traffic count from Adair Way West is, is 800, you know, cars-ish compared to Adair Way East, which clearly, in my opinion, shows that people are using, going from Stockton Boulevard down Adair East, and then cutting up Fermoy, which is why the count's higher there than it is on the other side. So, I mean, these, these, this data supports the theory that people are using this as a cut-through. We all know. I mean, we all, I, I use it as a cut-through. I don't need any more because of the conversation, I purposely will avoid it, but, I mean, the roundabout at Twin Cities is, is certain times of day can be a whole different circus, and I know that people will try to avoid it. I think, I think although these other streets that we did traffic studies on, the Lake Canyon and the Beaver Parkway and the Amador, I think that there is some differences, though. I mean, the Amador Avenue, that, that is now become a thoroughfare to get to the new Tim Lewis homes. So, I think that's like a main kind of artery at this point, whereas Adair is more, again, I think the traffic we're seeing on Adair is really not people going into that neighborhood for the purpose of going to the neighborhood. They're, they're going through it to get to Walmart. I mean, it's just, it's 100% why those cars are going through there. I don't, I don't, I don't really see a big, I think this is more of an issue of not really a speeding. I mean, there is people speeding. Every traffic study you do, there's always going to be somebody that's speeding, and there's going to be, I'm sure the neighbors that live on Adair can say, "I saw a guy going 65 or 70 or whatever," and I'm sure the staff traffic study will probably have some, some small numbers of those. I think overall, people are driving, you know, it looks like, what, 32 miles an hour and a 25, so definitely speeding, but of course, looks like they're speeding everywhere. I think to, really what is, is, is a matter of volume. Like, it's just, people are using this street for a non-intended purpose, and I know it's tough, because, you know, the street were closed, they're just going to find another residential street to cut through, so. I like to hear from other council members, too, so, and we, well, I'm sure we're going to have lots of public comment, so, let's have a little bit of dialogue with the council, and then I'll go to public comment, and then we'll come back to council again for more comment. So, anybody want to tee anything off, or you just want to go right to public comment?
I'd prefer to hear public comment myself first.
Yeah? Okay. Let's start with public comment, then.
Alice Lee.
So, I really appreciate you guys giving me an opportunity, again, to speak to you. I thought all that was really interesting, and I, Mayor, I do agree with you that it is really a volume issue. There's no doubt in my mind also that people are using it as a thoroughway to get to Walmart. I do, I don't think that's going to get any better with the new development right there around the corner, where you're going to have, I don't know, 50 homes, let's say you get two cars each house, maybe, it's just going to make it even more congested. It's, I, I don't necessarily agree also that they would find another residential area to go through. I think that Fermoy, if you look at it, is designed where the houses are not facing the street. They're, they're, it's actually kind of a thoroughway, right? And so, I think that, that, that street was designed for that purpose, and I think people will also use East Stockton Boulevard more, and then go down Twin Cities. I don't think that necessarily back up into another neighborhood, and, and we just want a neighborhood where we can feel like we can cross the street, we can have the kids staying outside, you know, you can go for a walk in the evenings and in the morning, and not feel like, you know, I have to look over your shoulder, because you might get hit by a car if you don't like, you know, if you misstep. So, really, that's what we want. We want a neighborhood where the elder, there's a lot of elderly people on that street, a lot of children, we just want to feel safe. We want to have a neighborhood that, if it doesn't impede on other people's lives, that would just make our lives better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Dan and Marion.
We just got a couple of things that we can recommend, and that's speed bumps. It's, it's no-brainer. That, that neighborhood needs speed bumps. That's what all big cities end up with. I talked to people who lived in Stockton for 50 years, and they couldn't even get out of their driveways without getting hit. We almost got hit the other night. We were ended pulling in our driveway, so.
Car behind us wasn't paying attention, and was ran right into the back of us, even though our blinker was on, and we were making a left into our driveway. Put speed bumps on Adair, and I think you will solve a lot of the speeding problems. Number two, you put a very small sign that says this is not a truck route up on East Stockton Boulevard. I mean, the sign is about this big. Possibly, you could put a second sign that gives directions to go to the Tesla charging station, because if you put it in your GPS, it will tell you to come down Adair and go up Fermoy to go to the Tesla charging station. So, that has, has made a lot more traffic coming down our street. I sat in front of my house last Wednesday, waiting to get picked up by a friend. I was out there for 20 minutes. I counted 87 cars, and only 19 of them actually went to a full stop at the stop signs. So, people just cruise through, and that's the time of day that they're dropping off their kids and coming down the street, and nobody comes to a full stop. Most of them are rolling stops, some of them don't stop at all. So, and then, there's a police officer, a lot of times, that sits where the dead end was, that will get them. He doesn't park, take one sip of coffee, and he's giving somebody a ticket. So, I don't know if you can do something about the stop signs, but I think speed bumps are what we need to slow people down. If you have a speed bump, you are probably going to stop at the stop sign. And people don't stop, because it's a big, open, four-way stop, and you have great visibility, you can see no one's coming, so why should you stop? And now, the, where they're building the new houses, they put in a new stop sign, even though that Fermoy is closed off, but part of it is open, and people are coming through, and they're not stopping. So, you've got a three-way stop, and the fourth way is not stopping. Speed bumps.
Then, also, another idea is, is Walnut, you know, you get off Walnut off of, off of 99, you can go all the way down that, what is it? Walnut goes all the way down to all that housing. Well, those are the people that are cutting through. And then, what they've been doing in Oak Grove, I talked to some people, is they've been putting that no right turn, so you can't cut through that neighborhood, but you can go home that, the east way of Walnut. You can turn in there and go back in that development, in our development. So, I mean, you can eliminate a lot of traffic with a no right turn there, so that's an option, too. So, thanks.
Thank you.
For your time.
Thank you.
Rodney Pratton.
I live on the corner of 707, Adair Way, and I started this journey a few years back when our subdivision was finished, that road was supposed to been closed. Mike sent out this letter saying that the road was going to be closed. At that time, Mike told me that they didn't want to close, Mike Guthridge said they didn't want to close it, because Templeton wanted to keep it open. So, anyway, I went to the city meeting, and I talked to Templeton, and he said, "Since the fire station is not manned over on Walnut, that they wanted to keep it open," which I still didn't agree upon it, but I'd let it slide, and what I did was this, I figured I'd just wait until Fermway went through before I opened up this whole discussion again. That way, the fire department, police department wouldn't have a big issue about, because they would still have four ways to get in and four ways to get out. Okay? There's still subdivisions with one way in and one way out. We got four. So, anyways, what you're looking at, you're looking at the GPS and the So anyways, what you're looking at, you're looking at the GPS and stuff is telling all the truckers, the Tesla cars that come down our road. You guys already know that. The past week or so, I did my own study on Win Way, where Mike Guthridge built some houses there, and Elliot took over basically back behind there, okay? It's by that little park there. And so anyway, I sat there in the morning and sat there at night, watched the traffic go through, okay? There was hardly any traffic goes through besides just basically the neighbors, okay? Why there's no traffic? Because they don't have a Walmart power station there. That's what you call a normal neighborhood, okay? The reason why we got traffic is because we got Walmart, we got power, the charging station, okay? It's just, the whole thing needs to be shut down. We want the road to be shut down, we want roundabouts, and we want speed bumps. And that's what we would like. And far as like the other neighborhood, it's a quiet neighborhood over there. We got more electric cars going through our neighborhood, and they do, and they're all tired in the morning and in the evening going through. So anyway, it's just time for it to stop, and hopefully, everybody agrees upon it and is not opposed to it. I mean, we just want a general life where we could walk across the street without getting hit. So anyway, I just want to thank all the council people for listening and bringing it up and helping me out. And as far as the Templeton thing is, if we could get a hold of Barbara Payne, I've talked to her during that process than that I was going through a few years back. I don't really know where she lives, if she lives in the same spot. I did know where she lives, but I haven't seen her in years. So if anybody knows who, you know, where she is or whatever, you could talk to her, she would tell you that it took place. So anyway, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Rodney.
Next up is Bruce Ponell.
Thank you, council, for listening to me, and if there's any veterans left, thank you for your service. I'm a longtime resident of Galt. I've been here thirty-five years, originally moved in on the west side, ended up on Adair Way about thirty years ago. Nice, quiet street, nice, wide street, nice neighborhood, everything was great. And as Galt grew, which we all knew it would, and I'm fine with that, it managed to keep its small-town feel, but as things like the Rayleigh's and the Walmart Shopping Center went in, our neighborhood changed. The volume of traffic doubled, quadrupled, it was pretty crazy. And we've been somewhat tolerant of that over the years, as we know the city is going to grow, but the volume now of traffic coming through our street is just not a normal residential neighborhood anymore. And it is a school zone. We have an elementary school that has a gate that empties kids out onto our street. We have parents that pick their kids up there, and some kids bravely walk down the street and go home. I have grandchildren and great-grandchildren, I won't let them play out in front of my house. It's too dangerous. And it's not just the average speed of thirty-five miles an hour, which is too high, obviously, for a twenty-five mile an hour zone, but it's the ten, fifteen percent of people that are going well in excess of that, that scares the Jesus out of me. Well, I had a Mustang the other night, came down our street, easily doing eighty, ninety miles an hour, and I'm not kidding. It blew through the stop at Fermoy, got airborne, and sparked the mufflers as it landed, and his buddy was chasing him. I mean, this is not right. It's not right. And, you know, I don't want drastic road closures, I just want this to stop being a shortcut that's so convenient to get to Walmart and Rayleigh's that everybody uses it. Nobody wants to use the frontage road and mess with the roundabout. Nobody wants to go clear down Corillian and come down Twin Cities, because that's a bit of a mess, too, as you get to the shopping center. So we're the easy route, and now we got electric cars joining the parade. So it's just gotten out of hand. And I'm with Team Speed Bump here. I think the only way you're going to get people to slow down and maybe not use that route so much is if you make it less convenient. Right now, it's the path of least resistance, and everybody uses it. I get it. I don't want anyone to be inconvenienced, but on the other hand, I'd like my great-grandchildren be able to play on the front lawn and not worry that they're going to get run over. And the police have been great about coming out and catching people at the four-way and pulling them over and giving tickets out. They could be there every day, all day, and you guys could make bank on this. I don't know what your percentage is, I'm sure there's some downside with the administrative costs, but it's getting too crazy. And if you can reduce the volume, great, I'm all for that, but as far as more bike lanes or paint on the roadway, they ain't going to do it. Adair is a really wide street, if you've ever been down it, and most of the neighbors that I have, they park their cars in the driveway or in the garage, so the street is wide open, it looks like a four-lane road. And people come around by the school, and they see that nice, wide, open street, and they just hit the gas. And for the guys that really want to get sporty, they, I mean, it's dangerous. It really is dangerous. I can't walk across the street to drop mail at the mailbox without looking several times, coming and going, because it's nuts. So I think speed bumps, the only way that's going to deter people from, number one, speeding, and number two, thinking that's the easy way to go. You put a few speed bumps, maybe one on Fermoy, and they're going to go down the frontage road and go to Rayleigh's and Walmart that way, or go out Corillian, or find another way, not necessarily through somebody else's residential area. I don't want that. I don't want them to suffer like I'm suffering, but what we're putting up with is, it's just not right. And I'm trusting you guys to come up with a solution that makes sense, that has an impact to reduce the number of people driving down the street and how fast they're driving. So whatever it takes, I leave it up to you guys, but I'm on Team Speed Bump for now, and let's go from there. Another thought, and I don't know if anyone's ever given.
Sir, your time is up.
Go ahead and just wrap up. Go ahead and wrap up. You're done?
Just one other thought, and I don't know if it's feasible or not, but you could potentially shut off Fermoy and just have Adair go straight through to the frontage road and eliminate that from a route altogether.
All right. Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Lynn Mary.
I, too, like the previous residents, I agree with all their points. There are a lot of seniors on our street, and it has become increasingly more like a speedway than a roadway. I do not think painting, we do have some bike lanes there. I'm actually afraid to use a bike lane myself, because some of the cars that go through our neighborhood, I know it didn't show on the charts, but I know when they put the speed limit signs and they put the cable on the ground, that tends to slow cars down. When they're seeing their speed, they're slowing down. When they see that cable across the ground, they know, it's like, oh, now I have to behave. So sometimes, I don't, you know, I know what the numbers say there, but that's only when those items are out there. We have a couple of people that I think live in the track behind us. There's a couple of them, they're just a constant offender. They come to our neighborhood, there's a Camaro, there's a Mustang, they think it's a raceway. I mean, they're going down our street fifty-plus miles an hour. I've come down from Fermoy into my driveway, and with impatient people either crawling up behind me, or I'm slowing down, again, using a signal to go in my own driveway, but they're on the other side of the street. I've seen people driving where the person comes up behind them, and they're not driving fast enough, so they go around them. And the way that our street goes from Fermoy, there's the stop sign, but when you go down Adair, it wraps around. And my thought, too, is maybe down that end of the block as well, a stop sign should be put there, because it just kind of wraps around, and I think there should be a stop sign on that way, I forget what the street name is actually behind us, but one there and one here, so that the traffic does have to stop. I mean, that would be another suggestion that I would make for the street to do something about slowing these people down. So that's, you know, like I said, there's a lot of seniors, there's people that like to take walks with their dogs and their children, and it's like they said, I mean, we're afraid to cross the street sometimes. You really, you're in the middle of the street, which I live in the middle of the street on Adair there, and still, I'm wary about crossing the street to the mailbox across the street or to visit my neighbor, because there, you have to really pay attention, because you don't know who's going to come flying around the corner. And I know the police do sometimes sit in that little cove that we have there right now, but, you know, like I said, I don't think painting lines is going to help. We need more stop signs, we need more enforcement, we need maybe some speed bumps down that street, but that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ed Weber.
Thank you for your time tonight. Also, thank you for your service to the community of Galt. I know it doesn't get said very much. I'm relatively new to the Galt area. We got here in nineteen ninety, and we were probably one of the twenty, in the first twenty homes built in the Emerald Park subdivision. And one of the things that was part of that, in talking with Mike Guthridge, and a couple of people had mentioned it, and it was about the wall being, Adair being closed off. And Mike was very clear that, yeah, eventually, that wall, that was going to be closed off. Now, whether that was part of the city's plan or not, we don't know that, but all I know is what was being told to us. And there's many things that has gone on since that time that wasn't supposed to happen. Walmart was not supposed to be there. That was not zoned for a Walmart. So that couldn't have been part of the original plan to work on the roads as that was going in. Those adjustments were made afterwards. Same with the adult community. That was a change to what was the original plan. It was supposed to be single-family homes all the way out, and then where the Walmart is, was supposed to be a small residential, or excuse me, small commercial thing. So that's all changed, and that's changed the dynamic of those roads. I don't live on Adair, but I happen to live on Corby, the next road in, so I'm not dealing with what my neighbors are dealing with. But I can sit in my front yard, and I can listen and hear the cars all day long, and it's constant. I can hear Adair Road, I can hear the people speeding down Adair Road. Fermoy is not a safe place to travel. It's a speedway. It has become a speedway. People love to bike, people love to walk along that road, and I personally would not want to be doing that. You know, we talk about putting in bike lanes. Bike lanes are cosmetic. They don't stop anything, especially with people and their cell phones. You know, it's hard for a bike lane to stop somebody driving when somebody's doing this. So they're really cosmetic, they're not solving the issue. To truly solve the issue, we need to make changes. Personally, I am of the mind that putting the wall is the first part of the change that we need. That addresses the west side of Adair, but it doesn't address the east side of Adair, where we're getting all the traffic from the southeast end of the northeast area that are coming through, as many had mentioned, as a shortcut through, whether it be in the mornings, getting over to Walmart, McDonald's, Rayleigh's, or instead of dealing, pardon me, instead of dealing with Walnut out to the freeway, going down to, you know, take on Chaos Corners. People avoid that area, and so the natural place to avoid it is to come in through our neighborhood. So the city has helped to create this problem, and now we're adding more homes just on the other side of Fermoy, which is only going to exacerbate the problem. So we need to make some bold decisions and make some bold changes, and look back at what those original plans and designs were, and maybe make some modifications to that. I think you have three options that are very good. One is a roundabout, not a little slightly raised area. That's not going to slow people down. You need to have something that is an actual barrier to make people slow down and navigate the intersection properly. You could put speed bumps in that will help to calm that traffic down as it's coming down Adair and going through Fermoy, and even out onto Emerald Vista, through the self-help housing, as we used to refer to it. There's no controls in there, and people are just ramping up from Walnut until they hit the turn onto Adair. So there's nothing to slow people down there. And then again, so the wall, speed bumps, and a roundabout would do a significant job of controlling that traffic. It may be an inconvenience for some people, but it's no more of an inconvenience than what our neighbors are dealing with. They didn't move into those neighborhoods to have to be dodging cars. It's about a quality of life. That's partially why we all come to this community. It's a small-bedroom community, and with this growth that we've had, which is good positive growth, comes issues, and we are now dealing with one of those issues. And I know that you will do your best to solve that in taking all things into consideration, but I think it's going to take some bold decisions to do this, and maybe some uncomfortable things to do. And again, I appreciate Rod taking the initiative on this, and I don't know the conversations that he had with Mr. Templeton. I don't know the conversations he had with the previous building department, but things got done a little bit differently back in the nineties and in the eighties in town. And I know what Mike had told us, and I have to go based upon what he told us when we moved into this community, and that was that.
Sorry, sir. Your time has allotted, I'm sorry.
I appreciate you.
I was looking at some maps while you were talking, but, yes. I was looking at maps, I wasn't watching your time, but your five minutes has expired.
Oh, no, that's fine. I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Next up is Alicia Holka.
My name is Alicia Kafka, and I'm here today as a mother, as a neighbor, as a community member, and as a homeowner on Adar Way. We live directly on the corner of Adar and East Stockton, and I have to say, as a mother, I'm terrified. I'm terrified for my children every time we go outside. Every day when we go to go to school, we're fighting against cars trying to run us down, won't let us get in our car, we camp back out of the driveway. And I know for me, a core memory as a child, going outside playing basketball, you know, riding our bikes, those are things my kids cannot do. As a neighbor, I'm sad. I have amazing neighbors that I can't even talk to, because we're on an island between a highway. I'm looking at them across the street from a highway, and I'm afraid to go across the street to say hello. We just look at each other and look away. You know, it's sad. It's really sad. This beautiful home that I have and all of my neighbors, and we don't even get to, you know, you see all these other neighbors having good old times, and here's us, just scared looking at each other from across a freeway, hoping nobody gets ran down. just scared, looking at each other from across a freeway, hoping nobody gets ran down. As a community member, I'm wondering why there hasn't been a change sooner? This road should be closed. Put a bike lane to have a person on a bike as a speed bump until that doesn't work? I don't think so. Something needs to change. And as far as access goes, there's plenty of other alternate routes. People's inconvenience to go around shouldn't be our quality of life at stake. We live in these homes we paid $600,000 for and we can't even cross the street to get the mail without getting ran down. Not to mention, there's about 1,000 square feet worth of overgrown weeds right behind my home, ready to burn the whole block down. And it seems like we're just not cared about. And the solution to that is going to be to close the road. And when you close the road, you're going to actually have a neighborhood over there. The kids at Lake Canyon Elementary are going to be able to get together, have after-school activities, be able to cross the street without getting ran down. And not even just for my own personal. Because I don't mind if I have to, I guess, drive around the block to get to the freeway. If anyone's going to have to drive out their way the most, it's going to be me and the people across the street from me. And I really feel that, you know, our quality of life, you know, to somebody's convenience, shouldn't compare, shouldn't be on the same scale. My daughter here, she goes to Lake Canyon. All my babies will be going to Lake Canyon. And my daughter was telling me this morning, "Mom, I almost got ran down. I'm afraid to walk to school." And the school is on the corner. There's an elementary school on the corner. Why do we have 2,000 cars flying by elementary schools? To get to Walmart as a cut-through? We need to make Lake Canyon safe. We need to make Adar Way safe. I know, me as a person who've lived in Galt almost my whole life, Adar Way used to be a quiet, safe place, a neighborhood people were jealous of. Now people drive by and throw trash out the window because we're just trash over there. Nobody cares about us. That's why there's overgrown weeds on one side and a highway right in front of our home. And I would really, really, I know you guys care. I know you guys do. There might be a few people who are not directly affected about it, who don't care because it's not their home and it's not their heart jumping through their throat every time they walk out the front door.
Miss, if you could take a few moments to wrap up.
And that was all. But I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, next up I have Manuel Ayala. Manuel Ayala.
Good evening. I've lived in Galt my whole life and I've only seen it grow and I think it's going to continue to grow. I've lived on Adar Way for 10 years now. And it's only gotten busier. I remember back when I used to go to Lake Canyon, I would walk home and it was completely fine. But I have little brothers now that go to Lake Canyon and I don't really trust them walking back home. So I have to go pick them up, even if it's just on the corner. I don't think that's right. I still got presenting, but I'm up here anyway because this is really important to me. Yeah, there's a bunch of kids on our street. And I think the best thing we could do is just close the street down, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Ken Lee.
Good evening, councils. I don't live near their neighborhood. But past neighborhoods that I lived in, I experienced their same concerns. The Sacramento County have a traffic calming guidebook. Stockton and San Joaquin has a book on how to put in speed bumps and things like that. I used it in prior neighborhoods that I lived in. I put in speed bump before I left. Okay. I found out that people like charging at night because the charging rate goes faster at night. And if they're paying, if they have to pay, the fees to pay at night is actually cheaper than during the day. Is the road closure stated in the subdivision project plan prior to the project being built? And can you borrow the Elk Grove camera police van to monitor what's going on in the neighborhood? You used it in the Save Mart, Bob, you know, to monitor everything. Other things is, when I drove through Stockton many years, they have crooked roads where it's curvy. So that way it's not a straightaway in those divisions and cars can't go flying down because they have to maneuver the curves. There's no straightaways. Speed bumps can bother the houses that it's in front of. Speed bumps can be felt in the houses that's right in front of the speed bumps. So sometimes you don't want that. You could approach Walmart to see if they can help dictate to the trucking companies to avoid the area. Also, when commercial trucks go to do the neighborhood, when ticketed, they will tell each other not to go through the neighborhood because they got ticketed. The word gets around. I don't recommend capturing the trucks, like I used to do in Antioch, because they told you, you can't do things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
We have no further public comment.
All right. I wanted to state something interesting here while I was... First of all, I want to thank everybody for speaking, especially the young lady who waited out a two-hour council meeting with her children in order to speak. So I do appreciate that. I dropped a pin just down Stockton Boulevard. Comes up as Dashar Court, but it's actually not on Stockton Boulevard. It's just a little bit south of Adair. And I put in the Tesla station and I also put in Walmart. And in both cases, it gives me Fermoy Way and Adair as the quickest option. It says they're both three, it says they're both three minutes. But it gives me the Adair as the preferred. And there actually is a difference, .7 miles by going to Adair, 1.1 miles by going the other way. I hate the roundabout. I don't even like going up there. If you go up there at 4 o'clock, good luck if you can get in that roundabout. The other day, my wife was there and people were cutting through the Gillies Car Wash parking lot just to go around. And it's not going to get better. It's going to get worse because we have, you know, a lot more subdivisions that are going to be using that roundabout. And so by proxy, that roundabout is going to get worse no matter what, which is going to make people not want to use the roundabout. So probably using Adair and whatever is their route. But anyways, just want to state that for a second. Council, anybody want to dive into this first? Just jump right in.
I will. So I too did some testing with maps. But I was actually, what I did is sat up on, well, I did it from the parking lot here at one point because there's police in the room. I did not sit at the on-ramp and use the map. And Google Maps, or I'm sorry, the Apple Maps actually, and I told them I was going to the Tesla charging station. The Apple Maps actually told me to go up and get off at Twin Cities and get over there. Google Maps, however, did tell me to go to Adair. I don't think we're surprised by that. But I did, after about a half hour of trying to figure it out, told Google that Adair was closed. And just as I suspected and as the staff report said, it told me to take Emerald Vista. So looking at those numbers, if we were to close Adair, that, let me pull up those numbers again. Right now, that east side is getting about 1,100 cars per day. If we close Adair, my guess is that those almost 2,000 cars that are on that west side are going to, the majority of them are going to shift to Emerald Vista and come up. All the way Emerald Vista, which is a longer straight shot, as several speakers actually brought up, and make that turn, that 90-degree turn. And all of those cars are now on the east side of Adair. So staff did say, and I believe them, that the traffic, all we can do is divert the traffic. Traffic won't stop, as we all know, as we grow. It's just going to increase. So how do we mitigate it? So before I continue, I do have a question for staff because I think it would be a very good education for everyone in the room to understand streets at this point. Because if you take an aerial shot of the area, Adair Road, as you all have talked about, is much wider than those interior neighborhood streets. And so can you explain a little bit about arterial and, you know, those type of streets or whoever?
Yeah, that's a good observation. The northeast area specific plan, which Adair and Fermoy are part of, had specific standards and road classifications for development. So you essentially have, a neighborhood road is what you typically see on your cul-de-sacs and not your cut-through streets. You then have a collector street. And a collector is a road that essentially collects traffic from the neighborhood and then puts it out onto a major collector or an arterial. And if, as you note, if you look at Adair, it is built to the width of a collector according to the northeast area specific plan. And the total width from right away, you know, from edge of right-of-way to edge of right-of-way is 60 feet. And if you go to a neighborhood street, it's 50 feet. So it's really unfortunate, you know, that there was misinformation provided in the past potentially. Or I do know there was changes in the northeast area specific plan for land use over time. So maybe thoughts got confused as they went over. But it's my impression, based on the way Adair is built and the width, that it was always intended to act as a collector. So, anyway, I hope that answers your question.
So I just, it's an unfortunate decision, I think, back in the day when it happened, that Adair was originally planned to have that traffic. That's why it's as wide as it is. It's, you know, almost, it's very unfortunate that that message did not get conveyed to those homeowners when they purchased their homes, regardless of what's, what they thought the intent was going to be. And of course, I think back then, no one thought Galt was going to even be where we're at today, let alone at our 50,000 build-out. So, but we are where we are. That's, those are the streets. That's why people feel like they can go 50 miles an hour down them. I also live on a very similar street. I live on that, that, close to that neighborhood on Elk Hills. It also is a very wide street. We don't have bike lanes. We don't, I also very rarely will walk across the street. Thankfully, my mailbox is on my side of the street because cars are going everywhere and fast. So I 100% understand where you're coming from. But we are where we are now. So what do we do with that? And how do we mitigate that? Well, actually, another quick question for staff because as people were talking, it came to my mind. That back end of Lake Canyon, is that even zoned a school zone? I don't think, because I was trying to-
It is.
Does it have signs? Because I do drive it quite frequently, but I don't remember. Now I can't for the life of me. Does anybody know that, are there signs on Adair and on Emerald Vista showing that they're even coming into a school zone?
There's a school 25 zone sign on Adair, on east.
So eastbound, and so northbound from Emerald Vista, I don't know. So maybe we can get, and this is probably in conjunction with the school, see if we can get some of those flashing lights or something so that at least during the day, in the morning and before and after school, there's a little bit more awareness in the area. But I too, my children went to Lake Canyon. And it was closer for them to walk to the front of the school than it would be the back. But oftentimes, they'd want to go to the back. And this was years ago, mind you. And it was, when I would pick them up, there were just cars all over the place and people angry because there's cars all over the place and trying to get their kids and everything. So it is a hot mess back there and it has been for years and years. So I think a little bit more awareness, possibly. I'm just putting out there about that school zone. I just don't think people that don't have kids are aware that that's a big issue there. Like I said, we are where we are and it's unfortunate that decisions were made years and years ago. So I am just going to kind of go to, jump to the staff report and the suggestions. Although I do like the idea of speed bumps, I don't know that we should jump to that at first. I do agree, and I'm going to throw a story in here. I do, I know that painting lines and making it feel narrower seems silly, that people are not going to abide by them. My experience and what I have seen, and just even this new thing with C Street, is that people subconsciously try to fit in a, you know, we try to color in the lines, right? And we have the bad apples, and it sounds like you have a lot of bad apples out there. But I think if we put in some of these lines and for the, and narrow that west side of Adair, because the east side has them, and maybe a line up the middle showing where, you know, the road, where you're supposed to be in the road. That I would suggest, I do like the idea of having the, I don't know what you called it, the planter box, or it's not a planter box, at the beginning, at the opening. But I suggest that we don't do this halfway with that. I think we put a planter in like we've been doing up and down all the openings on Corillian. Make it nice, put at least one tree in there. That will help with the visual as well as they're coming in. Because I think that, that really short, whatever it was called, I think people are just going to drive over that. I just really do. They're going to hit it. It's going to be the speed bump. They're just going to come up and over that as they come in 50 miles an hour from East Stockton Boulevard. But if we put something nice in there like that, like we've been putting, and I know that means there's, we have to put water over there. I get that. And I know that's a greater expense. But if we're going to do this, if we're going to change, try to make something significant, let's put something very visual in there so that when people are entering Adair, they're really slowing down. You have a nice tree. It will actually be a, like a safety barrier for these neighbors to be able to cross their street right there because at least they can go and hide in the planter really quick and then make the next jumps, you know, across the other side or something. But trying to slow that traffic that way. And then let's give it, after we get that up and going, let's give it six months to a year. If it's still not bad and it hasn't, then let's go to the, to the speed bumps. That's my two cents.
Anybody else? I have some thoughts, but I was going to let everybody else go first.
All right, I'll jump in. Quick question for Director Griffin. So item number three. I'm for, well, I'll just start out and say I'm not opposed to closing it. Don't know that I would get any traction from that here. But I do agree that there are other ways in and out of that road. I also agree with some of the statements that were made. The city, you know, we did, over time, helped to create this. So let me ask Director Griffin. So by the way, the staff report was great. There was a lot of information in here and it was, I gained a lot. I've already learned a lot about this, but your staff report was really good. The only piece that really doesn't discuss in there is the Walmart, the cut-through and the fact that, you know, that's why we have the issue with this piece. I happen to live on a cat killer, I mean, a cut-through road. So cannot own a cat because, you know, he's not going to make it. So let me get to my question here. It says for option three, before implementing any of these devices, we're talking about the speed bumps. In the city, public works staff recommends creation of a citywide speed control device policy. So I assume we don't have one. control device policy, so I assume we don't have one, a guide to how-to and where these devices would be installed, along the establishing a continuous funding source for the installation, operation, and maintenance of these devices. I don't want that, because I am in favor of speed bumps, and I wouldn't want that to slow us down, what, what kind of timeline would be involved in creating this policy.
I would speculate-
I would speculate probably a month to two months-
Okay.
We could look at what other agencies have done.
So, it's not too bad.
I know this isn't bad pun here, this isn't recreating, this isn't creating the wheel. Other agencies have speed control device policies in place.
Yeah, and I think we know, it's obvious this road is an issue. I mean, it's not, I know the intent of that is to, you know, keep from everybody in town wanting to get a speed bump on their road, so I understand, but, but we know this is an issue. So, yeah, I'm fine with, like I said, if I get any traction, I, I wouldn't be opposed to five, but two, extending bike lane, striping, I, I do agree, that's really just something we're throwing in there, because, you know, we should have a bike lane in there. Install speed control devices, and number four, install the hair-and-bone median island, and I'm fine with decorating it or whatever we need to do, but I do believe that would help some of the maniacs that come around the corner. Yeah, they might hit it, but hopefully it'll do some damage. That's pretty much all I've got at this point.
Do you wanna go, Paul, or you want me to go?
Yeah, you go ahead.
All right, so, I'm listening to what everybody's saying, and, you know, if you just look at the way that this whole neighborhood is designed, going from Athucourt, you know, you have Valentine Court, Jennifer Court, Corvey, all the ones, they're all fish ponds, it's basically fish ponds all the way down, I call them fish ponds, cul-de-sacs, whatever. And you go down, then you have a dare. And it's really weird, because I know that they said it was designed to be a thoroughfare, but if you look at it, maybe that was a case as an out for that, those neighborhood people to get out. I believe that it probably was designed for an out, for those people. But obviously, we have created, as Mr. Prattton said, we've created this monster, because we put the Walmart, and then we have the Tesla station on us, and now we've created the situation where people using, using it for something else, not as a way for those people to get out of the neighborhood. And if you even look down where the cul-de-sacs that are now being built now, even those are like, you know, Christmas treeing down, it, it's just interesting if you look at it, if you had built that all as one piece, all at the same time and not, you know, not the ones down where Fermoy kinda comes at the end, but if you had built all one piece, you just really, if you look at it, you just, there's really no purpose for Adair to come out, because everybody can go up to Twin Cities, or they can go to Lake Canyon and cut over to the school, and all the people down in that lower part can go down Emerald Vista to Walnut to get right out to the, where the on-ramps are. It's just weird if you look at it, it just, so, looking at these options we have, you know, you know, I'm not opposed to speed bumps, but the thing is, I'm looking at a speed bump, like, well, we put a speed bumps in, is that gonna really, is that gonna help slow the traffic? I think it would, but I think, you know, okay, what does that cost? All right, and then you say, okay, well, let's put the, let's put the median in at the intersection of, of Stockton Boulevard to keep people from taking that corner too fast. Well, that might change that, but it's still not gonna be like, I, I personally, I'm not gonna be like, oh, I normally go down for Adair and Fermoy to get to Walmart, but I'm just not gonna go that way now, because there's a little median that keeps me, you know, as I turn the corner. I'm still gonna do it, that median is gonna keep me from using the street, it's just gonna make me from cutting the corner fast, which I wouldn't do anyways. So, I don't really think that cost is gonna be really accomplishing much. So, then we go to, you heard about doing a roundabout, and I do agree that maybe a roundabout at that intersection with the Fermoy, especially because now it's a T, you know, something visible would keep people, for probably running the stop sign there, because I know people run stop signs all day long, I believe the young lady that spoke said, how many people don't stop? I hundred percent agree with you, stop signs are basically just a suggestion nowadays, people don't even stop. And then I'm reading the staff report, and even though, and staff, so, so speed studies are unique, interesting things. So, it says fifty-eight percent of the people are going over the speed limit, but the way it says, but the way they're designed is if eighty-five percent of the people are going at speed, at a certain speed, then that speed is considered safe. I know it sounds weird, believe me, we can argue all day long about that, but that's kinda how it's designed. But the reality is that fifty-eight percent of the people are going over the speed limit in a neighborhood that has children, that has people backing out of their driveways, it's a residential neighborhood that people are living. And so, for all that, I think, what are we really, really trying to accomplish here? And what we're really trying to accomplish is for people to not use Fermoy Way, let me clarify, people that live outside of that neighborhood to use Fermoy, Fermoy as their path to Walmart. This is really bigger than Adair, it's really Fermoy. People are gonna go down Fermoy, they're using Fermoy is the quickest way to get to the Walmart, and it's great if you live on those little cul-de-sacs and you can shoot up to the Walmart back, but really, that's the real problem. So, if you're talking about speed bumps, I mean, you, you could really easily say, well, we should put speed bumps on Fermoy if you really wanna keep, slow people down, because as mentioned by someone, I forget who, that Fermoy is, is an absolute, you know, racetrack, and I, I wouldn't disagree that it is. So, really, we, we putting speed bumps on there, and then we have to always put, put speed bumps on Fermoy or on Adair, because we wanna keep people whatever. And if you, you know, do these things, and people are gonna take the other, the other, the other route, I, I agree that, I think there's gonna be a side to all things. But for me, to, to be completely honest, after just hearing everybody and then just seeing this and looking at the map, I just think spending money on the median and spending money on the speed bumps, or trying to figure out which one of those is gonna be the most powerful and all that kinda stuff, I think it'd just be better just to close the damn street, to be honest with you. I, I really, it's funny that I say that now, but I hear Matt say, and I'm looking at it, and I'm like, I just think if you just closed the street, you would just eliminate the whole process, and then you're only keeping Fermoy to the people that live in that neighborhood. Now, I have a suggestion with that. Hypothetically, very low cost, what about closing the street for like two months? Put up barriers, road closed, and just see how it changes things, and then we see in two months, we come back and look at it and see, has it changed anything? Are we still seeing a lot of people coming from the other way through Emerald Vista, and it's still a racetrack and it really, much has changed? For the people for Adair, it's probably gonna change, but is, how much is it gonna change for the other people in that neighborhood? I mean, we could do that for little, little to no cost almost, honestly, and then there's nothing permanent, nothing we can't take away, nothing we can't put back, I mean, I'm just throwing an idea out there.
So, Mayor, if I may, you know, take a crack at answering that question, I don't think it's that simple just to put up a barrier, because of the length of Adair from Fermoy, you would need to fashion for safety purposes, you know, for fire, to have a hammerhead or a sufficient turning radius for the vehicle to turn around. So, while you have sixty feet, you know, at least including sidewalk, curb, and gutter, and street on both sides, I'm not sure right off the bat, like, that's sufficient radius to make that turn.
Contrary to the other streets, like all the other ones, what's different?
Well, they have, like, if you look at the cul-de-sac, they actually have like, you know, it's kind of a bulb shape, so they actually have like that turnaround.
Quick question, has Calway been a part of this conversation at all? Because they got those big tracks that are good in and out of that, if you go and close that, and you don't have, you know, big enough space for them to turn, so, it might be something, if we're considering something like this, even testing, we definitely need to have them part of that conversation.
I'm just, we just have a lot of hypotheticals here, and we're not sure that any of them are gonna have, we're not sure how much each of these different options, what impact they're gonna have, and, and I'm just, I'm looking for the biggest bang for the buck.
Mayor, if I, if I may just add, you know, and again, you do have a list to choose from, you know, and, you know, I think staff did a great job trying to come up with solutions that would be more immediate, you know, and then cost-saving, and, you know, not that cost-saving is the overall goal, you know, we do wanna make sure that the quality of life of the people who live there is improved and better, but it's, you know, it's like any other problem, you're always gonna try, you know, the solution that gets the quickest results first, you know, and that is most cost-effective. So, you do have a plan, or you could have a plan to try, you know, the, the recommendation, do, you, you can insert other items into that before you go to, you know, the full closure. So, maybe closure, you know, is ultimately what you get there, but I feel fairly confident that slowing traffic down with a variety of the items that have been mentioned, you know, will, will fix the problem of speeding cars.
And I, and I know, Chris, that we spoke, we, you know, to full transparency, look, going into this meeting tonight, you and I had a conversation, I'm just like, it doesn't seem feasible that we would close the road, that wasn't really even on my radar, I was looking at other things. What, what is the cost? I mean, you have a cost of the, there's a price on the cost of the striping of the street to make it narrower, but there's no cost associated with any of the other items, there's no cost associated with the median, there's no cost associated with, with speed bumps, do we have any idea?
So, the, the cost, a hundred thousand dollar cost was combined for options two and four. And, Rose, could you pull up that exhibit? I emailed you. This morning, I had engineering staff identify what-
What, do you want me to pull up? I'm sorry.
Can you, there's a single-
Staff's recommendation.
Exhibit, I just emailed you.
Oh, excuse me.
So, I had staff come up, prepare an exhibit, if we were to close Adair Way and construct the cul-de-sac, how that would affect the intersection. And what this exhibit will show is, to install a cul-de-sac, it would pretty much wipe out the entire front and driveway of the two westerly homes at the intersection of Adair and East Stockton, and we would have to purchase those two properties to construct the roundabout and then put up the-
You mean, to construct the cul-de-sac?
I'm sorry, construct the cul-de-sac. And then it would also be the construction of the, the sound wall that is along East Stockton. So, roughly, to purchase those two properties, to construct the cul-de-sac, to have the wall, you know, you're looking at probably two and a half million dollars.
And that means those people are out of their homes.
What would happen is those two homes would be, would be demolished. What you could do is, once a project's done, you could build a smaller home on that property, but those homes that are there now would have to be demolished to, to construct the cul-de-sac.
Excuse me, could you possibly put that on the P drive?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
If you can give me a minute, we'll go ahead and-
Go ahead.
I'll get that exhibit pulled up.
You know, this agenda item, first of all, thank you, Rodney, for your two years you advocating, not for yourself, your neighbors, and my job is, our job is to quality of life. Lot of my colleagues, they clarification, lot of things on the consideration we have. And I'm, I'm, I'm talking about the, close the intersection, I, I really understand what the public comments say, but I also cannot ignore, I was the advisor on the safety committee. I see the report from the chief, and I also read the report from the fire chief and the public work department. They aggressively not agree to close that, and it's very hard for me to ignore these professional, and I understand everybody's comment too. So, let's, there is some other options, like an option two and four, the staff recommending, and I believe the cost is they're talking about hundred thousand. And I also inclining towards the speed control device. And there is a lot of new construction on the other city. I know our city does not have that many speed control, but the other city in Algro, I get the opportunity to go over there, some other city in Algro, they put that speed bump on that. And I personally believe if there is a speed bump, they can slow down the traffic. And we have a option, like an option one, do nothing, I don't think so, my responsibility to do something, because I work with these citizens, these citizens elected us to do, work for them, the quality of life. So, option five is maybe is too hard at this time, and I like to ask my other colleague, let's work on option two, three, and four, and which option is more effective? And I will ask Mr. Griffin, Mr. John, why the staff does not recommend speed control and giving the preference to option two and three? And I believing, and I don't, you can give your opinion as you're, and I believe the option number three can be more controlled than option two and three.
Yes. Vice Mayor, that's a very good question. Speed control devices, speed humps, speed bumps could work. Again, you know, as Councilmember Prattton identified, the thought process is, we'd like to come up with a policy that guides where we put them. Can it, this will be opening up, if we didn't have a policy, be open up Pandora's Box, and we'd be, we'd receive a lot of requests for speed, for speed control devices. So, the thought is, come up with a policy that, that council could adopt, that identifies where those would be and what the conditions are to justify installing a speed control device. It could be, it could, that, that is an option. We'd also need to work with both police and fire, because that, anytime there's a speed bump or a speed hump, any type of speed control device, that in essence reduces or increases response time for public safety.
No, I, I, I do understand, but I'm just asking, is your professional opinion, if that road, if we put a speed bump, just hypothetically, it will be controlled, more traffic, just, I, I know there is no policy there, policy can be in the future, but it just, is, is your opinion, it can be more control on the option three, or it can be more control on the trap, option two and four? Just your professional opinion.
It would depend on how they were installed. It's, it's very possible it could reduce speeds. But it's also possible that it may not.
All right, this gonna, you can come back in later. The, my other question is cost-wise, you know, the staff recommending we can do option two and four is can be hundred thousand. If we don't do option two and three, we just go to the policy in the future and just install a speed control, what do you think, what kind of cost is your approximate? Maybe less than hundred thousand, or maybe more than hundred thousand?
To install a speed hump, it's probably going, depends on the, the length and how many we would install. I wanna say for every speed hump, every twelve foot in length is about fifteen hundred dollars. So, it depends how many we would have to put in, and with that road width, you know, we're looking at probably five to six thousand dollars, probably, yeah, five thousand dollars to have hump, speed control devices, speed bumps, speed humps, that would go the entire width of the roadway.
So, so, so that's me-
Decide how many we would install. Would there just be one location that would bisect the entire road, or we put multiple locations throughout the neighborhood? Because then we ask the question, if we put one on Adair between East Stockton and Fermoy, do we also need to put one on the other side, on the east side of Fermoy as well?
So, that's me, this might be less, little bit less, less expensive than a hundred thousand. Right?
I think we, I think the, the standard will come from fire on the speed table or the speed bumps, because they have specific requirements for their trucks. That's not an area we get into as law enforcement, but definitely, I've heard it several times related to fire, so that would dictate cost and the repetitiveness, if I'm saying that right, of the speed tables or speed humps in any particular road range, if there's more than one on Adair to Fermoy or Fermoy all the way around the corner. Does that make sense?
Yeah, when I spoke to the fire chief, he said he's fine with whatever they're called, speed tables, but there have to be a specific width, because it's something they can navigate without slowing down.
Right.
So, they are very specific on what they have to be.
And Vice Mayor, Mayor, Council-
And Vice Mayor, Mayor, Council, I also had a conversation with the fire chief. And he basically reiterated that same comment, that there are designs in, you know, speed bumps where they can navigate. So, you know, kind of seeing where council, I think, is going. I think, I'm not an engineer, so I can't answer the question from an engineering perspective. And do speed bumps slow traffic down? But as a driver for forty five years, I can tell you from my experience, they slow traffic down. So, you know, we can amend, you know, the staff recommendation. Or as you know, you can amend that recommendation and include the speed bumps in that, you know, fix that we have going forward.
So let me, go ahead.
Let me, the reason, you know, reason I was exploring that. But in the future, that's kind of my opinion, I cannot speak. In my future, we may be, because we don't have a new policy, we might be need to exactly this kind of policy in the city.
Agreed.
And maybe I need to.
Thank you.
If I may clarify, the part of my hesitation is defining how many would we install? I mean, do we just put them in one location or multiple locations? That would also help identify, you know, would that slow traffic down? Because if you, if we put one, just one set of speed bumps right near the intersection of Adair and East Stockton, that would slow people down coming in at the intersection. But you wouldn't have people slowing down on the other side.
You know, there was another comment somebody make. They said there was not a big, like in sign. And I I check myself to that sign is not, there should be big sign, it should have no commercial vehicle. They just, you know, the sign is not that visible, you know. When the truck driver, I was a truck driver myself. You know, that sign is is the sign there, but they just a small sign and that crossed it. But I'm, if there is a big sign, it can a little bit help to the truck driver. This is not a truck. Thank you.
All right. So there are several things that I wrote down. My first concerns were the excessive speeds on that street, right? If you look at the max speeds, there are some that are in essence of seventy miles an hour. Right? And this is a school zone. So that's one concern. Number two, as I showed Councilmember Rodriguez on Google Maps, I walked that entire road right there at the corner by the school. And there is one small sign that identifies it as a school zone. There's more signs on Corillian at Lake Canyon identifying a school zone than the street that runs directly behind the school. Number, number two. Number three, I agree with the Vice Mayor on the signs for the for the no truck routes. And then we go to the the recommendations for staff. I agree with the recommendations as they're put forward by the staff for a couple of reasons. Right? We sit, for the amount of time that I sat on the Public Safety Committee and heard the police chief and the fire chief talk about how speed bumps do slow down response times. And in all the cities that I've worked in, that have on the ambulance, that have speed bumps, they slow down your response times. And we already have a problem with certain response times in this city. Right? The report that was done by, for the Consumers Fire shows that the ninety percent of the time, our average response time for a medical call is over nine minutes, which is one and a half times the national standard. We cannot be putting speed bumps. And I'm so, I'm sorry, but they even said that there's, there's a lot of elderly people that live in that area. We have to address all the other options first before we put in speed bumps. Because we cannot extend the response time of the fire and the ambulance that are responding to these medical emergencies with speed bumps. Until we address those response times and get them down to where they need to be, we can't introduce other things that are going to cause them to even take longer to get there. So my recommendation is start with the staff recommendations with the with the the bike lanes and the center median. Because they've, the staff has done a good job when we talked about the Corillian Safety Project. They provided reports and and studies that showed that when you narrow the traveling lanes of a road, it does slow down traffic. So I say we start with those and then we work our way up to the more aggressive ones. Because I'm here, I mean, I'll say it again and again, public safety is one of my top priorities. And this is an issue for me.
Can I ask a quick question? I know we're not going to be closing the road. But now that you have that map up there, if we put that herringbone median or my ultra herringbone median with a tree, is that going to block those neighbors from turning left or right into their driveways? That median? So if.
It would not, it would be very close to intersection. We could design it to ensure that it does not block driveways.
Okay. Because their drive, I know that North House on the corner, they have a big driveway, but they have that one all the way over to the the far west.
And that could possibly.
That one might get, get blocked a little bit if they're coming from.
You're right, that one on the north has the two driveways. They have the one that's on the west side of the property, one on the east side. The one that's on the west side could possibly be blocked.
Okay.
Yeah, after seeing this, I I totally understand the logistical problem with the that the fact that you'd have to create a cul-de-sac. And obviously, I I don't know that if anybody, I don't know if anybody who's spoken tonight lives in either of those two houses right there. Am I wrong?
The gal, the children.
She lives in six sixty? Okay. Who wait? Who, who is six fifty nine? I can't, we can't, we can't have people speaking out of order. We have to. I was simply, I was just simply looking for a show of hand if people that lived in either of those houses were present. Okay. Obviously, you heard the logistics around trying to close the road and the two point five million dollars. And I know it might sound exaggerated, but believe me, in government, it's easily, stuff can cost that kind of money. I want to reference, I I appreciate, you know, Tim's, you know, he's in public safety and that's his thing. But I honestly am less worried about response times or how many trucks might go down a dereway. And then I am more concerned about having the children that live at the house right there get hit by a car. I think if you're talking public safety, response times is a small price to pay for a couple of seconds. The speed bumps that, as you know, Tim, the speed bumps that we're talking about. Look, I I went into Elgro yesterday, there's a whole subdivision off of off of Bilby. It's Boa Nova is one of the main streets. There's speed bumps all over that subdivision, all over. And I drove all through, I was like, wow. And so I drove all through there. There's speed bumps everywhere in that subdivision. And they have the two big ones, and there's one in the center. And they have it spaced so that the truck, the tire, you know, the fire truck width can go through. But if you go through it, try to straddle it with a small car, you still hit the bump. I I I think for me, a couple of things, we need better school zone signs, as Tim mentioned. Clearly, that's a problem. We need a better no truck zone sign. As a matter of fact, not only do we need something that says no truck zone, but maybe one that says truck route and has an arrow pointing, keeping them going down Stockton Boulevard, where they should be going would be would be appropriate. I would also like to see the cost of the light up signs that when you speed and they flash, you know, the ones that are like the solar panel on top. Because something like that on Fermoy might be very helpful if you're driving down the street and you see it, it's flashing and says you're speeding, that might help control. But the biggest thing for me is, I I think, I would like, I would like to, I would be in supportive of moving forward with speed bump cost. I think at fifteen hundred dollars a piece, and you could, and you had to do two of them. So let's say it's three thousand for one speed bump. I mean, that's three thousand, even if you had to do three of those, that's nine thousand bucks. I say we get with fire, we talk about appropriate locations and spacing. I think one on Adair, halfway on this Adair, halfway on this Adair, and then one on Fermoy about midway down. I think those three locations would would be would be effective, very effective on on thing. And I think the cost of that, honestly, is going to be way, way less than a hundred thousand dollars. And I think it would accomplish a lot. So that's what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting some small sign tweakage and a possible hypothetical three locations for speed bumps if we can get with fire. And we can have staff come back and say, this is what it would cost to do the three in those spots. And we've talked with fire, and we've looked at the appropriate spacing and all that kind of stuff. That's where I'm kind of at with it. I'm just throwing something out to see whatever you think.
So curious, because I'm not opposed to speed bumps. I didn't realize they were so cheap. If we did speed bumps, would we still need that median? Do you think, I don't know, right at the mouth of it?
I don't know, I think the median just keeps people from cutting the corner, which is a problem. But I think, I don't know, you know.
If if we were to go with, yeah, if we were to put in speed bumps, speed humps.
Because I feel like.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I just felt like it would, that would almost be overkill, although I would love the tree as well, but.
Well, if it if it was, if it, if the little median, the pork chop, whatever you want to call it, if it made it where you have to going to slow down, because it does kind of narrow it.
Right.
And if, you know, we have the family with the children, those right there, it's clearly going to keep people from from going, from coming to a high speed, right? So I agree with you with that, for sure.
I just, because I'm, you think we just need, I almost think you need two speed bump areas on each portion of Adair, because people can get up to speed so quick.
That would be if we were, that would be if we put speed bumps in, you would probably have to have two or three on on each leg. If we had one close to an intersection and people decided they wanted to make up lost time, there's more than enough time, we would have to probably have two sets, if not three sets, probably two sets on each leg of the intersection.
Because it looks like the east side is a little bit longer. So maybe they get three and the west side gets at least two. Right.
How much time would you need, John, for staff to come back with costs? You guys look at the area and say, this is what we think would be best. We think it'd be best, and just hypothetically, that we put two here, two there, and whatever. You come back and you say what you think. And then tell us what the cost of that would be, including the median at the entry point.
We would want to confer with CSD Fire to make sure they're located. It would probably be not the next median on the third, but the one after.
Okay. Is that something the council could get behind, so we're moving this thing forward, but we're looking at cost?
I think if you're going to do that, I think what we, what you need is that policy that Director Griffin was talking about.
Well, I understand about the Pandora's box, too. I do, I understand that.
If we don't have that and we go install speed bumps in this location, then you know what's going to happen.
I totally agree with you. But on the other, because I'm on the Safety Committee too, and I get it. You put one speed bump, everyone's going to be all one speed bump. And I get that. But also, I I don't look at it as ways like, okay, well, I'm afraid that somebody else is going to ask for it, so I'm going to do nothing.
No, and the policy shouldn't take that long. All I'm doing is recommending that we work on the policy at the same time that Director Griffin is working on getting you all the rest of these things. So that those can be in tandem at the same time.
So what can we make motions on tonight? Bike lane?
I would like, I would like proposal motion that we have staff return back within sixty days with costs of, costs and locations of speed bumps on on both sides of Adair and Fermoy and the costs of of some signage changes, some 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 truck route change, sign, the school zone, and possibly cost for a speed speed something, just coming back with costs. And then we can decide what we want to do, what we don't, just to see what that stuff would cost.
But I would like to make a motion that we go move forward with the bike lane painting.
You can make a single motion.
Yeah, that I, because I think that just for.
That's a hundred grand, though.
No, that's with that median in there. The painting is.
The, the hundred thousand dollar estimate is based on, we'd have to do some road maintenance work. We'd have to do a lot of crack sealing. Then we would go to, take a step back. If we were to re-stripe a road with bike lanes, that's typically done with thermoplastic striping. If you have a road that has excessive cracking, like this section would, we would want to go in to do some preventative maintenance, do some crack sealing, come back and then do a slurry seal before we place the, and it would be both bike lanes and a center line as well. So you'd have the two sets of solid bike lanes, and then you'd have the yellow dash center line. So that's where the hundred thousand dollar cost came from with all the road maintenance as well as the the island.
Okay, so maybe we wait till we put in the speed bumps before we paint, right?
Exactly.
Okay. I withdraw.
So my motion is.
Can you repeat your.
Yeah, so my motion is bring back cost for speed bumps and locations of speed bumps. The the median that we talked about at the entry point. And also some sign changes. Maybe just the increased on the truck, you know, something better for the truck route designation and something better with the with the school zone at the other end of Adair when you get to the school. So I just want to see costs. But most importantly, the speed bump locations would be obviously critical. And if you could converse with CSD and find out, you know, what they're okay with with that. That way, when you come back and say, here's the locations, then we can, you know, we don't have to then go back to them and make it even longer, right? Procedure, that's my motion.
And I will make a second on that.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Any, is there any other motion?
Rose, you get all that?
Yes. Cost of speed bumps with locations of the speed bumps, policy, medium.
Policy wasn't part of the motion.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, let me clarify, let me clarify, let me clarify then. I will clarify one more time, I'm sorry. I'm proposing a motion to look at speed bump costs and locations, installation of the median at the entry point for a dereway. Obviously, in conjunction, in in correlation with that, work, start working on a policy for speed bump implementation and also signage changes regarding the school zone and the truck route. I get it? You hear all? Okay.
I will do the second.
Okay. All right, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Go call vote.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
No.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Yes. Okay, proved four to one. So look forward to seeing what comes back. I appreciate the council's input from all the things. This is a really tough subject. I appreciate the patience of the public and especially people who live on a dereway and Fermoy and all their surrounding areas, that, you know, the wheels of government don't move fast, but we have to get it right. We can't just rush into this.
Or we end up with the street like Adair if we don't do it right.
Okay. Where's my agenda at? All right, moving on to communication. Do we have any this evening, Rose?
None.
All right, City Clerk's report?
I have nothing to report.
All right. Item O, comments by staff. Mr. Marius?
Assistant City Manager Amy Mendez.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Wanted to let you know that we're going to be holding a community meeting next week on Thursday, May the twenty ninth at six P M. I'll send you all an email so you have the information. But this is going to be in regards to the Fairway Oaks project. There's been some activity out on site, and we've had lots of questions from the community. And so we want to engage the residents that are surrounding the construction area and those that'll be impacted. So we'll be holding a community meeting on Thursday. Public Works will be distributing door hangers.
Where's that going to be at?
It's at the Tribola Center. Public Works will be distributing door hangers this week to the impacted property owners. And so I'll send the information to you so you have it. Staff will be on hand, along with developer representatives. The City Manager and I will be there as well to answer any questions and provide a presentation to the residents.
Are those door hangers going to be bilingual?
That was a question that was raised this evening. Because of the tight timeline, we're trying to see if we can get them printed double sided so that we have that ability.
Because I can tell you, there's a low, high number of residents on Glendale that are, and those people are going to be affected dramatically, especially with the rear wall or the rear fence or whatever, so.
So that was just mentioned. I told our community engagement analyst that we would chat in the morning to make sure that we could. The translation's not a problem, it's just getting them printed double sided in the time that we.
So another idea would be if that's not viable or if it's not feasible or whatever. I mean, there's probably fifteen, twenty homes on that one side. Maybe a staff member that's bilingual could just knock on the door. If somebody answers, they could explain what it is and just, maybe that would be a super powerful thing. And they could just do that for the, I don't think it would take that much time.
We might be able to do a flyer as well, just to kind of substitute. So we'll work on that. But I appreciate that feedback. The other is, we are going to be launching a campaign next week regarding the parking of R Vs, boats, trailers on residential property. So there'll be a social media campaign that we're going to kick off. And it's it's really an educational campaign, just kind of giving some feedback to the community on what the code allows for and then why it was created, why it was put in place. And then we'll be following that with a survey that will coming out in the utility bills. So the June utility bills, I believe, are being mailed out around the week of June second. There'll be a survey to residents asking for their feedback. And that'll link QR code as well as a paper survey if somebody wants to mail it back with their utility bill. So that will help us gauge kind of what the community's feelings are as it relates to the ordinance and potential modifications to it. So that will be. So that will begin, I believe next week is when we'll launch that, so there'll be, um, an article in the newsletter, and then also, um, some social media, um, material that'll be distributed. And that's it, that's all I have for this evening.
Uh, I would just like to add, uh, I do think this is Penny Buckman's, our new Finance Director, her first council meeting. Uh, you picked a doozy, uh, so welcome. Uh, they haven't been this long, so I think they'll get shorter, uh, but if you picked the over tonight, you did well. Uh, and I do wanna thank the council members and staff who attended, uh, cap to cap. Uh, you know, I do think it was, uh, very educational, like going into it, you know, I felt like it was really just gonna be mostly a learning process for all of us going through, but I do think that we all took away something for, for it, or from it, uh, that was really helpful to galt. And I really wanna thank the Vice Mayor for the late night networking, you know, that it was, I really appreciated that, so I appreciated your company in that, uh, in that regard. So anyway, that's all we have.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item P, comments by City Councilmember, future agenda items, Mr. Pratton.
Um, just one thing, I did attend the Walmart grand opening, but apparently I was there representing Councilmember Reed. So, uh, just so you know, I behaved myself. They introduced me as Councilmember Reed.
Nice. You're welcome.
I told, I told Mr. Pratton, I said, someday you are going to really enjoy the anonymity, that people don't know who you are. All right, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, thank you for staff, their detailed report, thank you for their comment, thank you for their clarification. Uh, thank you for the public comment. Uh, thank you for everybody come to the meeting, even don't make a public comment. I did attend a ribbon-cutting ceremony on, and renovation on Ace Hardware on May sixteen. Uh, they was in this town, and the business is thirty-three year, and they did very good renovation on, uh, that hardware store, thank you for them. And future agenda item, I would like to ask the council, in my contingency, one thousand dollar, I would like to give to Liberty Ranch Hawk Booster Club. Uh, their financial is, everybody know is not that great, so I like to get that, my hundred thousand dollar from my funds to them, next meeting.
Your thousand, your thousand dollars? You said a hundred thousand, I was like, how come you get so much?
Sorry, but that, I would, clarification in, thousand dollar.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Reed.
Well, first, uh, I'll echo the Vice Mayor, thanks to staff for, you know, all the work that they put in every week to give us this information, and, um, all the public comment that we keep, it just seems like more and more people are showing up to the meetings as it goes along, so it, it's, it's very, um, encouraging to us, as opposed to the meetings that we come in and there's no one here. So, thank you for coming, keep it up. Um, I wanna reiterate the National Military Month, and thank every single one of them that came here, and everyone else in our community that's served. And then, uh, the last one, this is, uh, National Emergency Medical Services Week. So, uh, my thanks goes out to the police, fire, dispatchers, everyone that does that work. Uh, I did it for a long time, and it's a hard work, and that's the reason I'm not doing it still, so, uh, thank you for that, and that's all.
Ms. Rodriguez?
First of all, before I forget, yeah, again, Amy, please don't leave before I give you these. Um, but I wanted to say welcome to Penny, and I apologize for how long we, we went on. Um, maybe if you're choosing to not attend a meeting in the future, might be that RV meeting coming up. But other than that, I think we're, we're good. Um, I did attend, I was invited by, uh, um, the local Weeblo pack to come and, uh, talk, because they get a, you know, a government badge. So it just, I, so they wanted to know about the election and how that went, so it just seems like everywhere I go, I cannot take, cannot leave Matt Pratton behind, because he was part of that conversation. They were very intrigued, and I did tell them that you still have the straw, so they may show up and ask to see it, um, but also, Mayor, they did, um, we talked about them possibly leading the Pledge of Allegiance. They're, um, they're going into their summer mode right now, so when they come back, they're gonna reach out to help to our Pledge of Allegiance. Other than that, again, thank you to staff, um, again, I apologize to poor Mr. Griffin, because it seems like he gets the brunt of everything. Um, he's a good sport and a great staff member, and, and actually, we have a great staff all, all around, so thank you to everyone. That's it.
All right, thank you. I told you this, I'm gonna reiterate again, I told you guys when you did the straw thing that that was gonna be a big deal. I don't, you guys don't know at this present how big of a deal that's gonna be, I'm telling you, it was before it was on the news and all that. Um, just a few things, and first, Mr. Reed, I know you're new to, to politics and everything, but I wanna tell you, somebody wise once told me, the best gratitude you will ever receive will be empty seats in the council chambers. Remember that. That means you're doing a good job. When there's a lot of people, people are unhappy about something, remember that. All right, thank you, uh, welcome Penny, that's such a fitting name for Finance Director, Penny. Yeah, so thank you, sorry about the long meeting, but hopefully, uh, it won't be all that way, but, uh, welcome. And, uh, I wanna thank the Parks and Rec and the Public Works crews for, uh, weed abatement stuff going on out there, cause I get a lot of talks this time of year, it's spring, this is when it's all growing, and I'm hearing a lot about it. But I think you guys are doing a good job, the Parks and Rec, I know Armando's not here tonight, but hopefully he'll see this back, that his guys are doing a good job. Um, there's been some complaining, but honestly, people are always gonna find the one small thing to complain about, but generally speaking, I think they're doing a good, doing a, a knockdown job out there, so thank you to everybody. Uh, I did attend the Walmart grand opening, I got a fancy Walmart vest, they made me a name badge, I got some Walmart pins. I was like, incepted to the, to the, to the, the family that, I got to sing their little chant and all that stuff, yeah. Uh, I wanna thank Craig Holder, the store manager, for inviting us to the, to the event, and we had this cool idea that I could come be a door greeter for the day, the mayor could come be a door greeter at Walmart, wouldn't that be cool? Maybe people walk in, and I'm just there, like shaking hands and kissing babies and all that stuff? Yeah, anyways, I, I told him it'd be a cool idea, we'll definitely do it sometime. Uh, but it was a great event, we'll thank Walmart for, you know, continuing what they do for the community, obviously creating jobs and tax money and everything, and providing a lot of products that we can't get anywhere else. And lastly, I would like to wrap up with a, a request from my city, from my fellow councilmembers for a future agenda item. I think, I want it to just be an agenda item, it's not pressing right away, but I think, cause I think we'd need to be a conversation beside, before we can actually look for direction. But I really, and I talked to Chris about this before, and he was kinda like, well, but I really, really think that we need to at some point conduct an updated traffic study of the area by the roundabouts, because the last one that was done in twenty eighteen was, was huge. I wanna see how much it's, how much it's changed between that, but we need to have a baseline, so that when all these developments are done over in that area, we can then look at it. I think traffic to me is gonna be one of the hugest things that's gonna impact our, our, our city moving forward because of all the development. And I wanna have a reference point to that, and I think it would be good data for us to go out and try to lobby for things like the Walnut Interchange and all that kind of stuff, so...
Mayor Farmer?
Yes.
Uh, I don't know if I communicated this to you, but we do have a private development project that is being proposed on the northeast corner of the roundabout, so Twin Cities and Highway ninety-nine, and they will be doing a traffic study. So that will give you like new data, uh, for, uh, traffic on the roundabouts.
On both roundabouts?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, good. So then, I'm okay with that then, do you know when that'll be conducted?
Do you know the status of the application?
We are working with the applicant right now, um, and so the traffic study had begun, it did start, um, but there's a new property owner on the site, so it's been delayed a little bit. Also, Cal Waste will be doing a traffic study as part of their Um, project, and so, uh, we should have adequate data out there.
Okay, great, thank you then. Okay, um, go ahead then, go ahead, Fonny.
Just a quick question, if council will support staff looking into it? Speaking of those roundabouts and that whole intersection, that I know Caltrans is in charge of taking care of, and we all know they don't, and it takes a lot, so can we look into possibly getting an inter-agency contract with them so that we can just do it? They can pay us to do it, and we can just get it done, so, I mean, that's the entrance to our town, so anyway.
I would support that, hundred percent.
So, um, we, I know we maintain the east roundabout. Uh, I don't believe there's maintenance done on the west side, uh, cause that's not in the city limits, that's actually county, and then, uh, other jurisdiction. We, we can investigate, like...
Whoever we have to make a contract with, whether it's the county or Caltrans.
Doesn't know that that's not ours, and I hear about it all the time about that roundabout, yeah. And so I know Public Works and TJ Code Enforcement do reach out to Caltrans, but it's likely they have to always reach out in this process, and then...
If we could just get a three-year, they only do three-year contracts, three-year contract with them, and so we can just go and do it, and they can pay us.
Yeah. All right, so just closing out with, again, hope everybody has a safe and happy Memorial Day weekend, and don't remember why we're celebrating Memorial Day, um, so remember those that sacrificed to give us these great holidays, and feel to enjoy these holidays with our families. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting at nine forty-four.
BK.